Come on ladies.
Bet he'll get it going.
Council President is calling everybody over. The Council President is calling everybody over.
Alrighty.
They never said let's start.
We'll do it. I like the gavel.
And did you have packets for me?
There's one for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Oh, I'm sitting way up here.
Alright, wanna welcome everybody to our June 13 City Council Workshop. And we will kick things off with a presentation from Law Kingdom. So let you come up and here at the workshop, we're pretty informal. So Matt, in fact, feel free to even sit up here with us if you'd like.
Okay. Well, let me start at one end.
Okay.
That way we're not sitting in the middle and then we don't know which way to pass things. But just take one of each and actually I'll send it around your way. And we'll kinda start off. I know that I recognize, I see at least two or three faces. I recognize from the open house that...
I think actually we're all there at one point or another.
I was gonna say, I think I dredled a lot of folks that day. And I imagine some of you put dots on these boards behind you.
Yes.
We did. Well, I want my dots because I didn't think we were supposed to.
I don't think I brought any more. I'll tell you what, if you just, I'll let you go up there with a pen. So I went back after, after the open house and I wanted to kinda revisit kind of all the planning work that's been done and the surveys that had been done so far on parks. So, and again, it was kind of a refresher for me, but I thought it helped everybody. So going back to the '09 Parks and Open Space Master Plan done by Schwab Eaton, kinda went through that and gleaned the, what I felt was pertinent information, which really is on the second page of this. The first page is really kind of a summary of what you have. And that's straight out of the report. There's nothing new here, no new information on this part. But what it does is, what that study did was it based on, it compared what you had at the time based on national levels of service and then it based it on comparable cities in the area. And that's these two kinda summaries right here. The first one's national, second one is local communities in Kansas, or just in the local area here. So it looked at the number of acres based on your population, tennis courts, basketball, playgrounds, swimming pool, trails, and shelter. Those are the only topics that they really touched on. So you can kinda go through there and kinda see where deficiencies occur and where, at least through the national standards, that you really are sufficient in your facilities. And then you go down to comparable cities, which is right below. Some of those numbers change a little bit. I was actually a little bit more surprised by the number of acres. Actually went up for comparable cities around here versus the national norm. We actually have more acres.
Do you know which actual cities those are? They're right in this region?
Yeah, it's in the region. It's in Kansas. Yep, it's right around here. And it's in the report. Sorry, I didn't write down exactly which communities those were. So that's kinda the summary of that report and we'll kinda touch back to that. And then I went back through the survey that went out last year through WSU. Again, it didn't touch on absolutely everything that the Parks and Open Space Study did, but a lot of it was some similarities. And again, just a summary of kinda the findings in there to give you an idea of kinda how the community responded to those items. And then I went ahead and summarized then our open house. And of course, we asked some of the same questions, but then there was some more other questions. And I kinda summarized just from all those nice little dots and from what I overheard people saying, kinda what, summarized the open house. I'm not gonna take you through all these. You can read these and I read before you fall asleep. Some of it was a little ambiguous, but some of it wasn't. Really what I found was there's a real need and desire for sport courts. I mean, across the board, that was something that was desired. I prefer multi-use courts, which is kinda shown there at the bottom center, over straight tennis courts and basketball courts. Just because you get multiple sport use out of them than the single use. They're just more functional. It's a better use of the funding, I think. Pop Jeff Fountain, again, came up quite a bit. Very popular. Dog Park wasn't all that popular in the survey. And of course, the Schwab Eaton report didn't touch on it. But it was popular at the open house. Kinda interesting. All these pathways are always a popular item and there is some need from that through those, through those other studies as well. And park structures were popular, but it wasn't definitive on the type and use necessarily.
Would it be happy, sometimes a park structure would be?
I think, I think you would want a park structure. I would make it as multifunctional as you can, as I would with anything that we do, just to leverage the monies that we're putting into it and making sure that we're getting the use out of it. Disc Golf wasn't entirely popular throughout. Fishing pond was okay. You know, I'll be honest, there's a lot of other ponds in parks and it really wasn't showing up real strong. Farmer's Market was really, really strong in the open house and that hadn't been asked previously in anything. But that was really, there was a lot of advocates for that. And Skate Park was actually not a lot. I'm not saying that that doesn't, there isn't need or a want, but it wasn't really all that popular. So, kinda going back through then, where we go from here. I started looking at property. And you remember, we colored dots matched up with a different property or a different park. In your packet, I'm showing the first one, two sheets, Lycie. And the second two sheets is, I'm calling it City Square Park, but it's, you know, who knows what it's going to actually be referred to later on down the road.
Basically out there.
Correct. Right out here. And the last sheet is actually a piece of ground in Central Park. It's over by the pool, which I'm gonna get to last. So, looking at your second sheet, which kinda looks like this one. The darker green areas are city-owned ground. We've got about 6.2 acres right here. We've got about 9.28 acres here. And they're not contiguous one to one another unfortunately, which isn't ideal for a park because you'd like to have your park, you know, actually connect to the entire space. So to make that contiguous, we would need a piece of ground on this property right here. And I figured it's about three and a half acres. And I went ahead and I drew that boundary to absorb all of the floodplain and floodway that goes through there. And I've identified both floodway and floodplain. And maybe you can help me with this. Looking at the floodplain maps and at the pond, Lycie, it struck off in a hard line, almost like there's a dam, but I don't think there's a dam and I cannot figure out why that is. Have you ever seen that?
Yeah, there is kind of a dam there, if that's what you get.
I don't know why that is needed there.
Very peculiar.
There is a dam down to the south, but not to the north.
Yeah, I thought that was really kind of odd. So we'll have to look at that a little bit more. Obviously, floodway, floodplain, they get a little sticky with you doing a whole lot in those areas for obvious reasons. So, but it lends itself to park development pretty well. You have an existing pond up in this area. And during the open house, we did talk about possibility of filling this one and actually creating one down here. Wanna explore that a little bit more through design. I wanna look at it on here, but I also wanna look at it here. Not two locations, but one and the other. I wanna look at designs for both, to be honest. I think it's worth exploring. Reason being, there's a lot, there's actually a fair amount of ground down here if you work in the school district property here. It's usable out of the floodplain and floodway that I hate to give up to a pond because we need ground. The other thing about this property up here is you do have some exposure to rock road. And I don't know if we wanna carve off ground to sell for commercial purposes.
Probably some of that corner we would.
Because it is, it's obviously, I mean, it's valuable and it's a waste of... And I don't know necessarily if it's the entire stretch, but at least perhaps a corner lot would make some sense. And I think that's okay to do and still maintain a fair amount of ground. So in this park, we're probably looking at obviously the walking paths, fishing pond, a shelter of some sort. Again, that's something that we need to kinda explore. I don't know if the event center, because the parking need and the size is appropriate here, but perhaps a shelter venue of some sort that could be rented and used might make much sense here. I like Dog Park here. Again, that's something we can talk about. I like it because hey, we don't have a Dog Park. Number two is we've got a lot of multifamily around here, which is, it's a good amenity for multifamily. I was kind of avoiding sport courts in this area. I've been thinking that this is because of again, floodplain, floodway issues. This is probably going to have a fair amount of naturalized space to it. Obviously, that's gonna help with maintenance costs as well. And we did talk originally about forming a partnership with the school and maybe they can come over, have classes, et cetera, utilizing those facilities. Okay, I'm gonna move on, then we'll kinda circle back around. Let's go to sheet, this one right here. This property is of course a property just northeast city call. And if anyone remembers, this is actually the original, from the original master plan for Central Park. We have it for, we've got the file for some reason. We have lots of files for some reason. But I didn't do anything right here. This is straight from Bill Young's master plan, okay? But way back then, there was this idea of a city square park. So it's not a new idea that I came up with. I'd love to claim it as my own, but I can't. But it does make sense here. And I think the community does, has voiced their desire for a congregation or a gathering space. And I think that kind of space lends as well, you know, lends itself well to this idea of a city square. Doesn't have to be square, you know, or anything like that. But something that's a little more, a little more urban park than, than naturalized park like Lycie. Some of the uses that I think fit well there and even the survey kinda confirmed this. Obviously Splash Pat makes a lot of sense. You've been down to Old Town, you know, that makes sense. They just, they kinda go together. I like the idea of a shelter here that has a performance or performing aspect to it. I don't know if that means it's a full stage necessarily, but it has the ability to have performers. If you have a guy out there, you know, strumming a guitar or playing or something like that. Some, something, you know, that would facilitate that kind of activity. We could even design it in looking at, you know, other types of events that could go on on the weekends, Friday night, Saturday night, kinda thing. Which then brings me back to Farmer's Market, which again, I think this is a nice location for. These things that bring a lot of people together for events. Kinda makes sense for a sense of community to occur at this location. Kind of keep this less recreation-based. Playground, we've got one right up the street. Probably have a playground, well, probably, not probably, but we will more than likely have a playground at Lycie, but I'm not so sure about this park since again, we've got one right up the road. But it's not so much a recreation-based park per se. It's more urban park-like. So that brings us to courts, which we haven't addressed yet, which we still know that we have a desire and a need for. This thought occurred to me as I was looking, and I didn't bring, well, Bill Young's old master plan back too. Maybe you remember, he actually had a lot of field and courts planned all up through the center of Central Park. Now, that's changed over time, the school buying a fair amount of the property. But I still kinda like the idea of the area by the pool and the playground supporting sport courts as well. I think there's some synergy of uses that could go well over there.
Yeah, they could play tennis and then just go jump in the pool and cool off. If you ever drive by our park on Woodlawn by the fire station, that is one of the most used parks I have ever seen anywhere. You see people there all year round. It's very popular. And it has the tennis courts and the picnic tables and the playground stuff for kids, but there's always people there. And I see families go there and have big family gatherings, you know?
It's kinda interesting. When I first started this job, this project, it was more, it was, okay, we wanna design a park, we need a local little location. So that's kinda what went after it. And as it's kind of unfolded, it's really become, well, yeah, we're looking at a location for a new park. But as I was going through this, it's like, but not all these things that the community wants and desires necessarily belongs to that location. There's some other locations I think are more appropriate for these other pieces and parts that could be added over time and actually make those other parks even better and stronger. You know, as far as like, you know, this town square idea, I don't, I would not anticipate that developing without the, you know, some development occurring up here. Whether or not you saddle the developer, if you're likely, or if you're lucky enough to be able to do so. With the cost of doing that, that'd be great. But if not, you can say that, well, you know, that's our plan and that's a little bit of an impetus also, you know, care for them too because they know that'll bring people to the area.
I was gonna say, do you know what Mr. Bill had in mind for that?
Oh, a whole lot of square footage.
But yeah, I don't remember.
I was gonna have a ice cream shop, a cupcake shop, fancy fountain.
It's very aggressive and I think it's probably, it's probably a little optimistic.
Way.
Everything he did was optimistic.
But I don't think that that necessarily negates the idea of this, of a town square either. Now, maybe a little bigger than this, than what he's envisioned because the area may not be able to support as much retail or commercial. Maybe you could even entertain the idea of residential.
No, one thing that's really neat with, I spoke a little bit about this at our last meeting, was, you know, this is what I feel is a golden opportunity. And I look at the seal, which says, "City of the Future." And you use the word gathering space and we've heard that loud and clear that maybe a downtown isn't the number one want, but more of the gathering spaces. And I wonder if the cities of the future are gonna have more of the gathering spaces as opposed to that one identified downtown. I just throw that up. I don't know. I mean, if we don't have a downtown, but we have these gathering spaces, does that make us a city of the future? Or do you really think we need to have that downtown identified corridor? You know, where all the, all the towns had. If you go down Main Street, Newton, or Main Street, City A, B, and C, D, they have those downtowns, but...
They aren't connected to Wichita like we are. You know, that's the difference. They're out there by themselves. They have to have downtown. We don't.
Yeah.
The thing with the survey is every one of those I read through, they didn't want a downtown. Because they're close to Wichita and then go into Wichita and do it.
That's what I saw that too. I think that the idea or the term downtown really was off-putting to people. Now, when I was doing the survey, there was, there was interest expressed to having a place to come that had some detail component. And so, they didn't use the term downtown. But they did have, they wanted to come to a place.
It's the place to come for Farmer's Market. It's the place to come for like music.
Festivals or something.
And, you know, if you've noticed, Bob and Luigi's has really gotten very busy. Anytime you go by there, there's lots of cars. When Woodlawn expands, they're gonna lose a lot of their parking lot and everything. And they have entertainment there that's gone over big. You know, and it's kind of a gathering spot where people can go for lunch and gets a bite to eat in the evening, you know? So that has been successful. And also, you don't see very many video stores left around, but our video store is doing fine.
There's always cars there.
There's always business, you know?
When you have events, you know, I think it is important to have a place to hold those. You know, Andover doesn't have a downtown. They're just, you know, they've got Andover Road. And they're struggling with the same kinda thing, you know? And they've really worked hard on Central Park to kinda create that gathering place there. They've got the city hall there now. They've got the library now. Or actually just, we just wrapped up plans on their amphitheater. So they're actually going to build that amphitheater that they've been talking about for a long time. So that's become their gathering place as a park more than anything. I think there is some opportunity and advantage to having some development around that type of space though, to take advantage of the people that are there and to get those people that are visiting an opportunity to get that ice cream or the, you know, whatevers.
How big is Andover's park?
Oh, Central Park?
Yeah.
I can't tell you right now. I don't know. I'd have to get the number. I can, I can get it to you. I just don't know off the top of my head.
Off the top of your head.
That entire park is.
Well, because they're getting ready to have their, it's an annual festival or something that they have. And Clint Black's coming, yeah.
Yeah, they've got the concert Saturday and then they have Andover, like Greater Andover Days in that same park later on in the year too.
Yeah.
Derby, again, you know, downtown really. And they just got done building a very nice park on Madison Avenue. And spent a lot of money on that. They've got two event centers. But I think they envision that as kinda their, you know, gathering place in a long way. So parks do fill some of that niche. I just, I really do think that some commercial component or, you know, around it just helps a lot.
I've been to the Derby one several times already for events. And the park around it is absolutely beautiful. But I felt a little bit like something was missing.
You know, the odd thing with that park is that there's a lot of floodway right through the middle of it. That's why it's still open through there. And that's one issue that they have. You know, I don't know what is, we always put parks and floodplains and floodways because Andover did the exact same thing because we're gonna have floodway.
What's funny is this was taken in '06, 10 years ago. And already, so when you talk about the time.
It takes time. It does take a lot of time.
What I'm showing him is I pulled up a picture, trying to find the size to answer your question. And we got a big picture from '06.
You know, I do like...
The house already with the shelter.
I do like Lycie, you know, because it does have the floodplain and floodway. I do like Lycie for a park, just not the gathering place park. I like right up here. It's more appropriate and can be a lot more successful.
We can't, we can't do everything at once, obviously. So it seems to me logical that we concentrate on outside of city hall because city hall has enough natural traffic pattern. People come here habitually. They pay their water bills. They pay their fines. They come to court. There's reason that they, they wanna build something or whatever. So there's reasons to come to city hall. We have the parking outside. It just seems reasonable to me to concentrate on that area to begin with. That's my thoughts. Oh, be quiet.
Farmer's Market. Still want a Farmer's Market.
Well, I think that comes along with it. If it's the gathering place, that comes along with that.
Yeah, put a Farmer's Market right in there.
You know, it doesn't have to, a Farmer's Market doesn't have to be a static place. I mean, even the ones out at the Extension Center, I mean, people drag up their trailers and their trucks and what have you and everybody's happily walking through there.
Yeah, that's something that we discussed during the open house. I think with Farmer's Markets, it's a great idea to really start that before you even do a park. Get people used to going to it. Get it, because it's gonna take some time to get Farmer's Market up and running and the vendors used to coming and, you know? So it does take a couple, you know, a few seasons. So don't invest a lot initially, but get them used to occurring there. And then as monies, you know, become available or develop, and available, you can start building around it. I like that development style a lot better than just going out and building something and hoping that'll, you know, they'll come.
It seems like we could almost start that in our parking lot out here.
Good.
Well, they could even over there east of the driveway. And then leave your parking lot for the people that come.
And if you have other events currently, or if you think you may have other events down the road, you know, start pushing them out there.
Can we have Russian party too?
Get them used to coming to that place. We can go either direction with design, Lycie or this one. It doesn't really make a lot of difference to me. It's totally different parks. We can sign either. And at least then you have, it may not look exactly like the master plan when we're done, you know, because things do change and forth, but it gives everybody a picture, an idea. And it also gives them an idea of what's in it and what to expect. One thing we did for Chini, we did a park for them last year. They have a big giant board printed off for them. And they've been going through, knocking things down. You know, we just planted this hedgerow over here. And they, they're really good at running around, getting grant money. They've been really aggressive about that because that's how they planned it. Actually, pretty much everything they've done so far. But they've got another ball field going in, so they kinda put that on there, ball field done. It's, it keeps people engaged. The other thing that we've done also is after a master plan's done, is we've given it to the public and said, well, what do you want done first? You know, if we choose what's most important to you in this park to get done first and then let them kinda prioritize what you want. So there's lots of ways to engage the public with that process too.
Well, I'd like to throw out another idea now that, you know, when you talk about ballparks and ballfields and things like that. We had a big plan for a high school for our city. And I think what we really ought to do is concentrate on working with the school board to get a dual high school up here. A Bel Air High School along with the Magna High School, which this building is big enough for. And they have done that in other areas. So that when people are looking to buy a house in the city of Bel Air and they say, what's our school? We can say, right up here, Northeast Magna and Bel Air High School. They're all together. And they have all the plans already made out that we didn't get to do because of budget cuts for wonderful ballfields. That could be, you know, that's usually the center of your town. When you have kids going to high school, junior high, and they're playing ball, that's your town meeting place right there. And we've got this up here. We've got the plans. And I think what we should do as a city is start really working with the school board. Now, that would take care of the ballfields thing, you know? Why should we start a whole new plan, spend a lot of money on something someplace else when we've got the, the plan already up here? We've got the school. We need the school for the city of Bel Air. We need to tell people, when they're looking for a house, the realtors need to tell people, this is our school and we're rated really well. Your kids are gonna get a good education here. To me, that should be our number one priority. And I think we need to do these other things. I think Farmer's Market would be a good way to start out. I've always liked the idea of a, a Dog Park too because that brings people to Bel Air. Because we really don't have a good, a good Dog Park in Cedric County that I am aware of. And people love their dogs. They will go to a good Dog Park wherever it is, you know? And when people come out here and go to the Dog Park, they'd say, boy, this would be nice to live closer to the Dog Park, you know? And so, those are just my ideas of... And so those are just my ideas of, I just, I just think we really need to start working with the school board. You know, we're gonna get our state budget, getting some money in again, it looks like. You know, that means the schools are supposed to get their money, like the court said, you know? And we need to have our school that the school board planned for our city. I think we ought to work on it. And that, like I say, I'm not saying all these other plans aren't good, but before we get started on another road, doing all these different things, we need to make sure that those ballfields, we should not go off down another path someplace else, in my opinion. We should work to get the school here with all those fields that they had planned.
And I agree with Ramona. The only problem I have with that is the poor planning of the school board anyway for sticking Stucky in the middle of a marsh and, you know, because the land was given to them. And, you know, now they're selling off the land around Jackson because it wasn't planned properly and because more land was given to them for Gammon that's down in the middle of the housing addition down there. And how do I know that? Because I gave it to them. I stood before the school board and said, here's your land. Build a school here. We've got Heights, and they've spent thousands of dollars on athletic improvements since my kids went to Heights. It is not the same school my kids went to, which was a country school, basically. So I don't know how we get that, but I agree with you that, you know, the schools they're building now are... I just was in awe of either one of those when I went through it and went, wow.
And this school out there is, yeah, fantastic. Isis Pass, fantastic. Northeast Magnet's fantastic school. And I think we just need to work with them, you know?
Can't hurt, I guess, is what I'm saying. The other thing that I have taken from this that I liked, and I've never heard the term, but the multi-use.
Sport courts?
Yeah, sport courts. Because one of the reasons that the tennis courts and what have you down there by the fire station are so busy is because, hey, they're the ones.
Yeah, really.
You know, we need more.
That's right, we do.
And to have them multi-use really makes a lot of sense to me. I didn't know what to call them, I guess, but I know I've seen a lot of kids down there on the tennis court shooting baskets. So dribbling balls around.
See that all the time.
Well, you know, finally, they get used to a lot with pickleball. Pickleball. It's very, very popular right now.
Probably be daytime or something when I'm not around, but, but, yeah, I mean... And I know that I had seen some issues that the swings and things that used to be there are in disrepair or have just, you know, just disappeared. So I still think and value the fire station just because it's a fire station and the things that the firemen do for this community and that kind of thing. And since they don't seem to mind having a jillion kids running around there, let's take advantage of that. You know, if one of them happens to get hurt, there's a fire station right there that, they're all EMTs, too. So, you know, that's a good idea that we make that as spiffy and nice as it can be, you know, kind of thing. So I think that's important for us.
Anything else?
Well, reading through the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. Bel Air Park, they already have bathrooms there. And you said your recommendations were somebody's who has to add restrooms?
That was from '09, the Parks and Open Space Master Plan. They may have been added since then, perhaps?
Also, on the adding a splash pond fountain to the community park. There has, I just heard on the news not too long ago that there's a safety net that we, that you need to put into that because kids are slipping, cracking their heads, going to the emergency room. I think they had, like, two accidents last week where they were running through the water, little kids were running through the water, and the thing was slick.
There's a couple of different things you can do. You can do basically a poured-in-place rubber type of almost playground surfacing is what it boils down to. Over time, when you expose that to fountain water, it's going to deteriorate relatively quickly. A new, kind of a new fangled thing that they've started to do, and I haven't seen one around here yet, is actually artificial turf. And they actually use that as the surfacing. And you've probably seen that in some playgrounds, but you can actually do that with fountains, too.
That might be more comfortable.
It's pretty interesting. It's actually really pretty interesting.
Well, it'd be better than cracking some kid's head open. The city getting sued because we've got the splash thing.
But then you've got your fall hazard prevention, you know, safety surfacing, just like.
I know Buffalo Park has had some issues there on the west side of town somewhere with that.
Yeah, the poured-in-place rubber with fountain, I'm probably not a huge proponent of just because, you know, how quickly it can deteriorate with this, you know, using an artificial turf. It's kind of interesting.
I like the artificial turf better than, I think that, isn't that cheaper than buying the safety coating stuff? You have to replace it.
Yeah, it's probably pretty close to one another. Once it's all set and done, you're probably pretty close to the same. Obviously, it's more expensive than just throwing concrete on the ground, but you also don't have the issue.
We'd rather not have issues. Well, thank you.
Well, my question for the council is, the next step, part of it was to, part of this identified location, we kind of, and I like Jeff's idea of utilizing some of the places that we already have, but part of the proposal was to come back with a layout for us that we could start planning for and looking for grants and donations and things like that. So would, here in Guy, would you like Jeff to focus maybe on something across the street? Or would you like him to focus on Lesay, you know? Because, or he could do them all, but there would be an addition to his proposal, so.
I'd rather he just focus somewhere here across the street.
I was gonna ask you, though, is that, is that more valuable land we'd be giving up? Then the thing that's nice about Lesay being over there in the floodplain, we're not gonna be able to sell that for anything else, you know?
Not all of it. I mean, you'd be able to sell off a little bit up right there at the front of John Rock.
Yeah, that's about it. Probably a few lots there.
I think that your major value over here is, again, and this is probably because we're a little further out, is, and the intensity or the, and the market is not overly strong, is probably going to be along the arterial, like your third and Rock. That's your prime ground. And then working your way in off of those is probably dropping, the value's probably dropping for the building.
And so there's about 20 acres there. What would you think about, I mean, what size do you think we would need something for the gathering place?
For something like, I like four to five acres, really. Again, we'd play with some design, but I like four to five acres.
Isn't there four or five over here?
Oh, there's 20 acres.
Yeah, that's what we pull out about five. Four or five's about right for that kind of a space. You don't want to get it too big because then you kind of, you want it a little tighter because you want the people a little closer together, and you just don't need a big open space. So it's, you know, four to five acres, you know, talking 20 to 25% of that property is all. And I would put it right across the street from City Hall is where I would look at.
Sounds good to me.
I'm in favor of that, across the, five acres, pretty nice.
So if you could work on the last phase and put that.
Yeah, we'll come, come back and see.
How soon?
Couple, three concepts. Give me a month. Is that okay?
So you'll come in the last meeting in July?
Um, yeah, do you want to do the workshop again? It's nice because we can have more conversation about it.
Yeah, the second Tuesday is our workshop.
Is a month gonna be enough for you?
Yep.
In plan, what I would probably do is just do plan only at this point. Have two or three options with, again, some example imagery. So I'm gonna put them together pretty fast for the concept. The final will take me a little more time to put up together a good, I mean, a good-looking picture. But, yeah, I think so. July 2nd, you say 2nd.
Tuesday in July.
Oh, boy, hold on.
It's Tuesday.
Let me check one thing.
So we got the.
We moved it to the third last meeting.
Counsel.
Yeah.
Which day would that be?
Tuesday.
The 11th?
11th.
Okay, good. Yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
It'll sync down around table. Sounds great. Well, thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, now it actually gets a lot of fun.
All right. Well, this is exciting. I like this. This is cool. I look forward to seeing what we have here in a month. So, um, next item, item two are appointments that are coming up. Mentioned at the last meeting that Gordon Jones was wanting to step down from the Planning Commission. After 10 years, he will be missed. And have sent out David Floyd's resume after he mentioned he was interested. He's been to some of our events and come out and wanting to volunteer and be a part of it. And you guys said you wanted to kind of meet him and talk with him. So he is here. If you want to kind of say anything and introduce yourself and if you guys have questions.
Should I come to the podium or join anybody else?
No, come on.
Okay, I think at one point or another, I met everybody except our new city attorney, Jackie. Right. I'm David Floyd.
Hi, David. Nice to meet you.
It's nice to meet you. And so I'll, by way of this, I'll introduce my wife, Kelsey Floyd, who went to law school with you at Washburn, she says. Kelsey is an assistant city attorney with the city of Wichita.
I know Kelsey. She's very good. Yeah, she's great. Awesome.
So I just, before I take any and all questions you might have for me, I want to dovetail onto the presentation you just had because you had a lot of really good conversation. And I'm right on board with you that I think that a five-acre gathering place, what I sometimes hear referred to as that third place, you know, you've got home, you've got work, and then there's that third place where people go. Comes to mind Starbucks at Central and Rock Road. It's the same folks in there every morning at 6:30, 7 o'clock. That's their third place. And it's different from a park. It's an open green space, more urban form. So, and, and like you said, Mr. McDonald, that it's not all gonna happen at once. And so I just, I thought you'd be the perfect person to address the need for some really good shade trees in an outdoor gathering space, so sooner rather than later because you're 10 or 15 years away from the shade you need to have some, some good events in the summertime.
Very true.
Anyways, so I gathered my thoughts today about what it means to be a member of the Planning Commission, about zoning, about subdivision regulation, and I'm willing to talk to you about that or anything else that you might like to know.
What is your general background?
Okay.
From education all the way to work and so on, just a general.
I have a BS in accounting from Kansas State. In addition to that, I'm pursuing a certificate in economic development with the Hugo Law School at Wichita State. And so far, that's consisted of coursework on the graduate level in real estate investment analysis, local government law, which the course was delivered in part by your former attorney, Lee Parker, and in part by his son, Austin, who is the attorney for Wampo. Additionally, planning process was instructed by Scott Knabel, who gave you a presentation before I was a Bel Air resident on the Tiger Grapes program and getting funding for a transit center at WSU for their innovation campus. And Mr. Knabel really helped me cut my teeth in comprehensive plan, the importance of that. We learned about subdivision regulation, zoning, Parks Master Plans. Had a lot of really great speakers come and talk to us. City engineer Gary Jansen from the city of Wichita. Alan Bell, who used to be the economic development advisor for the city of Wichita for decades, and several others. So I've had those experiences, really, really enjoyed those experiences. And, you know, combined with that and just a general interest, and I'm really very passionate about developing our built environment. That's what we're really doing in city planning and land use planning. Development is the built environment. So I take every type of opportunity in my job to get involved with that. And that initiative's rewarded me, and they've trusted me more so with things like working with contractors to do site planning and do permitting. Just yesterday, I put in the approval to do an environmental site assessment for a possible new location. So just a lot to do with things that overlap with the subdivision regulation that goes on, on the city side in my profession. And I'm an accountant with Bushwood Investments, where Jimmy John's franchisee, so the owners of the company operate 45 restaurants in Kansas and Texas, including all five stores in Wichita.
Okay. Appreciate that. Are you from Kansas originally?
Wichita, yes. I'm a graduate of Southeast High School, the old Southeast, not the new one.
And where do you live in, where do you live in Bel Air, which park?
So Lot 35, Block 2 of Willow Point and Eagle Lake.
I'm sorry, I just.
Other way around is 4530 West Lake Court.
Yeah, I saw it in your resume, but I forgot. So, okay, I know where that is.
Eagle Lake, as we call it, and we just really truly enjoy it there.
I'm glad you put it that way because coming from a farm background where they still abstract land and things like that, you have to read those things very, very carefully over your up the creek, so to speak. Not so much here, but... Well, I'm glad to hear that you have an interest in this. I kind of spoke out at the last council meeting, expressing my concern because your resume was more accounting than the development and that kind of thing. And many years ago, I worked for a residential developer. And so it's a, it's a great deal of interest of mine. And as we've progressed from master plan number one to whatever master plan we're on now, I've seen them all. I've forgotten some of them because they're so old and forgotten. But we are at, we are at a very good time here and now. Some things are very favorable. The interest rates are still very favorable. You know, home buying is slowing down a little bit because of some political uncertainties and things like that. But we have our Commerce Park, which is very important to us. It is bringing not only people who may want to live here, but people who work here. But the thing I'm still seeing is we're five years behind where we need to be with the planning. There are some areas that scare me to death.
Well, attention to detail is gonna be paramount to. Well, attention to detail is going to be paramount to making sure that that's done right the first time. My opinion is that the city puts its best foot forward and has the most power in the first life cycle of development. So taking an open piece of ground and plating it, subdividing it, developing it, because you have the ability to spread specials on the critical infrastructure serving that property. And what it does is it takes financing, those roads, that public improvement for water and sewer, and puts it on the property owner, and they're able to pay that, as we all know. Life cycle number two, people have been paying their property taxes all the while and carry an expectation that the city will maintain and, in the case of Pedro Street, replace the infrastructure. And it's very costly. And I want to take the opportunity to commend your city engineer for her work on Pedro Street because I know that you got into the weeds with that and you figured out that it was not an issue of really traffic or whether or not it was the upkeep of the street, but it's actually stormwater that was eroding that surface. And so when you redo it, you're going to use concrete because it's not feasible to go in and tear up the ground and put in a new stormwater utility. And so why I say all this is because you really need people on the Planning Commission that when they're approving projects, are thinking to themselves, is the necessary stormwater utility being put in place here so that we don't have another issue like we did on Hedrow 35 years from now.
Afraid we're going to have a lot of those coming up.
Unfortunately.
They'll be coming up.
Unfortunately, they're not, that's not the only one.
You know, and you're willing to accept bids that are a little higher on the concrete streets on your new development and because there's only so much time and resources for doing your slurry seal on those asphalt streets that you've got a backlog on. And so like I said, you know, with that initial phase of development, you're putting your best foot forward so that you can concentrate those resources on the areas of town that all the while have been funding all this. So it's a good growth strategy, but it's got to be done right the first time.
Yeah, but back then, I don't think they had concrete streets. Because you're talking back in the 1980s. When we first became a city.
Well, there were some engineering difficulties back then, too.
Yeah, and nobody mentioned concrete streets at all.
Just plain engineering.
Because I was on the Planning Commission secretary 28 years.
And now you're responsible for your own arterial streets, whereas when you were city of the third class, the county took care of those for you, so... I'm really very excited to be here and wanting to learn more. I've been paying attention a lot since becoming a Bel Air resident, so...
Yeah, we heard you watched us on TV.
Well, I listen, so I listen.
You listen?
Yeah, you know, I listen.
You don't have to watch us.
If there was an audio recording, that would save me a lot of bandwidth. But I listen and do my chores and things.
The weekends, it hasn't been working. We need to get on Cops.
Yeah.
They're still not working on the weekend.
Well, it's nice to know that somebody is listening, at least.
I always turn it on while I'm doing something else on TV. If you get it on Channel 7, then you, you don't have to use any bandwidth.
Any other questions for Mr. Floyd?
I appreciate your coming out. I appreciate the knowledge that you have expressed about the position that you're going to be taking. And I'm impressed and I congratulate you on taking the time and making the effort to come here to speak to the council members.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you. It's good to meet you in person.
All righty. Yes, and see now I'm a little excited about having. So like on the, at our next meeting next week, like I said, Gordon Jones is asked to be replaced. And I'd like to, I would like to put Mr. Floyd's name forward for that appointment. Stephen Crook and Deanne Ross have both said that they would like to be reappointed. And they've been there. Fred Cabala has agreed that he'd like to be reappointed to the tree board. And I know there are also two new names, Sylvia and Mark, that Gary brought to the last council meeting. So I don't know if you guys want to bring them in and talk with them and, or if you have questions you want to ask of them before we put them on?
Well, Mark was at the Arbor Day event, and I met him.
Yeah, we all met him.
Wasn't Sylvia there? Was there, too.
Yeah, she may have been. I don't remember meeting her, but I know she's also a master gardener. That can't hurt. I mean, that can't hurt.
You've got Gordon, Gordon Jones's name is here to be appointed.
Replaced.
Yeah, these are the ones that are expiring. Yeah, look in here.
Expired boards, okay, expiring.
Yeah.
I saw that.
So I don't know if you want me to go ahead and move forward with Mark and Sylvia's name or if you'd like to interview them, too?
Yeah, I think they're both, they seem really interested.
Just moving forward without interviewing them, okay. Can do that.
And I know Deanne, but I don't know Stephen Crook. I think I met him one time. But that's...
I said they've been doing it for a while, but, okay. We will have those on the next agenda. We'll move on to city attorney, Ms. Jaclyn. She's going to talk to us about the fireworks ordinance and the primary elections, won't you?
Yes. So in March, the state fire marshal issued his interpretation of the law, stating that he understood that to sell fireworks meant that that exchange, he interpreted that exchange to be occurring at the time that a buyer collects the fireworks and walks away with fireworks. So he did not think that that included the entertainment or solicitation for the sale, which by saying that, that opened the door for nonprofits and other organizations to be able to consider possibly going door to door, collecting sales. And Ty mentioned that you were concerned about that. You were concerned about the safety risks associated with that. Just the fact that fireworks are so regulated and you've decided as a city to allow the sales of fireworks, but you really want to make sure you regulate that and control that. And we needed to make sure that our ordinance reflected your concerns. So, looking at the ordinance that we already had in place, which was amended in August of 2015, I think it's in your packet as well. It does cover you, so I, in my legal opinion, your ordinance is okay. Like, it talks about that it is unlawful for any person to sell, display for sale, or offer to, offer to sell any types of fireworks outside without having a permit. So that really restricts who can offer to sell fireworks, et cetera. However, in light of the fire marshal's new interpretation and what people are thinking this means, I thought that it would be helpful to clarify that Bel Air is not, is regulating the fireworks and also the solicitation of fireworks for those safety concerns. So I sent out an ordinance amending the language to explicitly say that solicitation, sale, and transfer of fireworks has to happen on the site permitted. I thought that...
Where does that say that?
That is on the proposed ordinance. If you go to the proposed ordinance, there's that cover page that summarizes the ordinance. And on the next page, right in section one.
Right here, amending section 6416.
See that? I think you're looking at...
Right there, it says 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, third line down, at the permitted establishment.
But I would like it more specific to say no door to door sales because if you wanted to really get nasty, they could come in and buy a personal permit and then go door to door and get somebody, say, in Wichita or one of our people that are already selling fireworks to say, "Well, we got a permit, so you just take us to court."
The way that your permits are so strictly outlined and the way that they specify the who can have a permit, so business can get a permit, but the restrictions on that permit, really, it's, you've got it locked down as far as I think. If you're explicitly wanting to prevent door to door sales of fireworks, we have to make sure that we keep it in that safety concern kind of area.
Are you talking permits on, to buy a fireworks stand? Or are you talking a permit, like a person comes in and says, "I'm selling vacuum cleaners and I need a permit"?
No.
Because there's two different type of permits here.
Right. And fireworks, you can only get a permit to sell fireworks by going through this specific process spelled out in the...
And if you're going to sell it door to door, you have to buy your fireworks from a permitted stand. Okay? Now, those permitted stands bought their fireworks. Well, they'll be headed for China and Taiwan and what have you in September, October. And they will buy their fireworks for next year. And those will not be delivered until spring of this year. I mean, last year, because of some shipping issues, some of our fireworks wholesalers were, had their fingers crossed they were even going to have fireworks. But that's kind of the catch. I don't know this state fire marshal. I don't know whether he just forgot his hat or something that day because this, this is, I mean, it makes no sense.
Well, and in talking to some of the people at the league, I think part of what he was trying to do was to make sure that in cities where people were more okay with soliciting those sales, he wouldn't infringe on anyone's right, the First Amendment right, to say, "Hey, I have fireworks and I want to sell them." You know, and we're, we're well within our power to regulate here. And we're well within the First Amendment by saying that this is a safety issue and we don't want you to, you know, buy fireworks outside of this area. So I...
I was going to say, is that what he was thinking? That you could go across the line and buy them in Missouri and Oklahoma? Because you can buy them all the time.
Yeah, I'm bringing them back here and sell.
You'd buy them all the time then.
Well, and he was just, if you're saying that he never...
But there'd be no way to, I mean, part of the ordinance is that you must pick it up from the permitted stand. And so, you know...
So fireworks never leave, the actual firework product never leaves that permitted stand, you know, until the buyer comes to pick it up. But it's more risky. I think that from what Ty was explaining, your concerns are the risks increase when someone comes to your door and says, "Hey, look at this pamphlet with fireworks." And your, your community may or may not understand where you...
Well, and the payment process is also ridiculous because if someone comes to your door, they're not going to be able to take a credit card or you're going to write them a check. You know, you're going to have to pay at the stand. Would be the only way, really, that if some child comes to my door or anyone comes to my door when I pick those fireworks up. And again, it's just a whole, in the, in the whole way, things are working now. You know? So... Well, I think that's good that we have language in here now that we can prevent that. If anybody goes out and tries to do this just because they've heard other people are doing it someplace else, we'll say, "No, you can't do that in the city of Bel Air."
Right.
If you want to do that, go someplace else, not here.
And so that said, you know, that's one way to solve that problem, which it's actually a more restrictive way. I mean, now we've got it in our ordinance in two places. One, where upfront, we're saying, "Hey, it's unlawful to offer for, offer to sell fireworks outside of the permitted area." And we already had that in our ordinance. And now we're explicitly saying, and any solicitation for fireworks has to occur in that permitted area further down. So we're really making it clear.
Yeah.
That said, it's more restrictive. So an alternative solution that you might consider is just using marketing, education around this time of year when police officers are already telling people, "Hey, these are the restrictions on when you can set off fireworks, the hours, the times, your age." Maybe making it clear that, hey, if you, if you want to allow people to go door to door in Bel Air, you can say, "Hey, you can go door to door to solicit those sales, but let's remember that the transfer of any fireworks has, has to occur at the actual permitted location." So you can do either, and I understand your...
I don't want it more normal. I don't think it's fair to the...
My neighborhood has...
The people that bought the permit to begin with, the price of that permit for them to sell for their, whatever they use the money for, I don't think it's fair to them to let people go door to door. That's why I'm really abated about it. It better be understood in here. I don't want to get sued, but I don't want them going door to door either.
My, my neighbors are very strong about not wanting solicitation. In fact, they've been telling our neighborhood board to get signs up. No soliciting in our neighborhood.
That's one way to take care of it as far as altogether in a private area like that.
Yeah, but you can put that sign on your house and they're still going to knock because...
Well, that's true. That's why I still want, even though we're going to have no soliciting signs, I still think we need to make it very clear that in the city of Bel Air, we will not have people selling fireworks door to door.
Right.
So we'll put this on the agenda then for approval at the June 20th council meeting, if everybody's in consensus with that.
Primary elections?
Next thing. Yeah. So I just want to talk to you. Like, at the last meeting, you had the question about would we have to pay for primaries even though it looks like this year we're not going to qualify to actually have one? Or do we have it in our charter ordinance to have to have primaries and have to pay for primaries? So just did some research on that and we tried, we chartered, we changed our charter in 2005. We repealed our order that our charters, our charter ordinance that exempted us from holding primary elections. So we decided that we wanted to participate in primaries in 2005. But that doesn't even matter because in 2015, the state legislature said cities must participate in primaries if you have the numbers then, because you qualify. So to answer your question, we can't charter out of the primary process. We have to have primaries if we have enough candidates that would require it. However, this year, we don't have enough candidates running to require that we have a primary. Also, in the years that we do have enough candidates to require we have a primary, we are going to have to reimburse Cedric County for the cost of that primary, so...
And how many do you have to have?
Three times the number of open seats.
Now, so you said in the past, we could have chartered out.
Right, and, and, right. It looks like we chartered out and then in 2005, we decided we wanted to go ahead and have...
And then we didn't get it back, chartered back out again because I asked for that to be on the agenda.
This is another example of the state taking our local rule away from us, which really irritates me because you hear these people, some of these very same people saying, "Oh, we don't want the federal government telling us what to do." But then they do the same thing to our local communities. So there are hypocrites about that, and I think it's terrible. I really do. If they don't want the feds telling the state what to do, why do, why are they trying to tell our local communities what to do? We should have local rule. That's my two cents worth. I had to get that out.
We can't anymore, so you have to...
There was a bill that didn't make it out... There was a bill that didn't make it out of committee that addressed that area as far as like local rule as far as having primaries. It didn't make it out of the committee. So when we look at legislation you want to propose next year, that might be something you want to-
Yeah, I, I would certainly be in favor of that because that's just one more thing, taking money away from our taxpayers right here at home.
Okay. Thank you for your work.
We appreciate it. It's a nice having you.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on now to our city engineer. Come talk to us about the paying township agreement. It'll also be on our agenda.
I've gotta say before you get started, I saw them out working on Farmstead Street today, taking the bump sound. That is so wonderful. Thank you.
You're welcome. It's quite a process that will be continued.
Yeah, but we're glad to see you starting on, working on it, I should say.
Thank you.
Question I have.
Yes.
Isn't there another contract other than this one that was in our package?
No.
Because I remember when we got on, Ramona and Guy and I got on council, we talked about this. Did we not do anything with that?
No, we didn't. That was the last one that was actually approved by both city, or the city and the township.
Yeah. But I was thinking that we did go ahead and have, because they worked on some street or something at that time, but we didn't approve that. Okay, thank you.
So you know the history of 53rd Street? The contract expired in 2010 where the city was maintaining the entirety of 53rd from Greenwich to 127th and the township was maintaining the entirety of 127th from 53rd to 45th. So we're maintaining a half mile of their property, of their road, they're maintaining a quarter mile of their road, of our road. But they are also providing mowing and snow removal services for our half mile. So the quantity isn't equal, but some of the services that they were exchanging, trying to make it a little bit more equal. With the contract expiring in 2010, my predecessors decided that contracts expired, we're not going to maintain their half mile anymore. We did continue to grade that half mile because it's much easier to take the grader all the way down the mile, turn around and come back. Not that much additional work. But we did not provide any material services, putting rock, gravel, sand and gravel on the street. We did not do any ditch clean out. The township maintains that they have been maintaining our quarter of mile this entire time. So since they've been doing that, they think we should have been maintaining their half mile, but there was no discussion.
That's what I was gonna say. When did we find out their feelings about that?
Last year. When, when I, I don't remember when, but I found out about this. I think Allison may have told me about it. I'm like, "Oh, that's interesting."
Well, I think, also I admit, Ann and I had been talking about, well, it should be nice if we didn't have to go over there, get and drive grader all the way over there and stuff like that. And, you know, maybe we could work out a deal where we would just pay them and they'd just be paying. So then we pulled out this agreement that we had years ago and then Ann started working on the process last year about, okay.
So last year, I met with one of the township representatives with Dave and Tim. We met him over on the street and these were, there were several things that he wanted to take, to get taken care of prior to the township taking over the road. So it was my interpretation that he wanted that to be taken care of, not on the entire mile, but on our half mile. So it's in good condition because if you're gonna take over the road, you don't want to take over a road that's in poor condition and have to put lots and lots of money into the road to bring it up to maintainable condition. I get that. I think it's a fair request. It was apparently the township's understanding that we were gonna bring the entire mile of road up to a good condition before they would take it over. So we put in some work on our half mile and we thought that it was in pretty good condition. It took us a while, so the gentleman that I had met with is now off the township board. There's now new members. I met with, Ty and I both met with the township board. They had come up with an estimate, project estimate of what they thought that it would take to bring that entire mile up to what they consider a good condition. It's about $20,000. I think it was more like 18, but 20,000 rough estimate. That's the entire mile. There is some, several culverts that they are gonna replace themselves at their cost, which ended up being about $2,000. They estimate that the amount of labor and materials that they put into maintaining our quarter section over that seven-year period is about $11,000. So there's a, there's a lot of money lying around, being tossed around. It would be my opinion that we should not be held responsible for bringing that entire section of roadway up. The current state of the roadway is in similar condition, the current state of our half miles in similar condition to what the sand and gravel roads are in town. It's certainly not in better condition and it's really not in much worse condition. Guy, you live on gravel road, you know, the ditches are not dug out, the culverts are filled in, the water drives goes down the side, edges of the road instead of the ditches.
I've got the Grand Canyon at the end of my, that's where they were causing-
Right.
You said the Grand Canyon.
Yeah, those, those issues are similar issues to what's over on 53rd Street. I walked the entire mile with their maintenance, their maintenance supervisor who's responsible for all the maintenance. We talked about gravel road maintenance. We talked about what he wants to see to bring things up. And while I'm not saying that his way is 100% correct, I understand what you're saying. It makes sense. I see the things that he would like to be taken care of, maybe not as a necessity, but as good practice. I will be talking with our staff coming up in the next couple of weeks and seeing if there's any things that we can start trying on our roads to make them in better maintained condition. But right now, on 53rd Street, we need to try and come to an agreement because it's really a pain for our staff. We, now that 53rd from Rock to Web is paved, we don't have any gravel roads over in that area. So we're taking our equipment an additional three or four miles, which is cost, out of the way to grade the one-mile section. The residents on that one-mile section want that road in perfect condition and it's not, it's not going to be. But if we can work out a deal with the township, they can start completing to the township and us, which would be absolutely wonderful. We get calls about every week from at least one resident over there, "When are you gonna grade our road?" "When we grade ours?" Is our response. So I've been working with Ty and with Jackie to come up with a revised agreement that we need to talk about. I guess Jackie, would you like to talk about some of the stuff that's in that revised agreement?
Sure. The revised agreement addresses, addresses two things, I'll pull it up on my, addresses the scope of the improvements. So Ann specified all that it would take to bring the road up to a condition comparable to the other roads in the area. And so that's the first section. The second section addresses the scope of the maintenance and the costs for that as well, and the payment schedule. Both sections address the payment schedule. I think we have the proposed costs just upfront, numbers that we think are reasonable in the contract you have in light of experience and other roads in the area. But other than that, we're just addressing the two main areas of the improvements and then the perpetual maintenance of that area that we're asking them to pursue.
So this includes all of 53rd?
This would include, they would take over our, they would take over the maintenance of our half of 53rd as, as well as our quarter of 127th Street.
And they propose an annual fee of, what was it, 5,300?
4,500. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, yeah, I believe it was 5,300.
Yeah. And that would be to maintain the roads, all the mowing, all the maintenance, materials, those types of things. Ann felt that based on what we spend, maybe 4,500 is more in line. And so that rather than us, you know, paying our staff and it's kind of a wash, we just pay them and for the material and the labor rather than us doing it. So it's kind of a wash there. So we were, we were thinking Ann was suggesting, maybe we go back at 4,500 for the annual maintenance because that would equate to what we spent.
$4,500 for a year.
For a year, yes, to maintain a mile and a quarter.
Three quarters, three quarters of a mile.
And we're not held responsible for that.
That makes your staff happy and then you wouldn't have to take the call.
The only thing that we would be responsible for is if there was an act of God. Some catastrophic event that occurred, a tornado comes through and wipes out the entire road. A huge flood that wipes out the entire road. Then we would come back to the table and talk about how we can make this equitable for both parties because we still own the road. We are still ultimately responsible for that.
We just have a contract.
Correct. We have, we are contracting out the maintenance for that road, similar to how we contract the mowing services for the parks and for City Hall. It'd be very similar. If there's a catastrophic event with the irrigation system, you know, we work to get that fixed.
Well, that makes sense to me.
I do. Give them the whole road.
Is this something, so be on an annual basis that this would come up or is it a five-year agreement? What?
The thing that we suggested, instead of having an expiration date like the old contract has, it's renewed in perpetuity unless-
Until we say no.
Either party, either party can say no. And it would have to be 30 days notice prior to the end of the agreement at least because it's, it's only fair to have, to leave an out for both parties. The other thing was the, to bringing the road up to a maintainable condition. The township is saying $18,000. I'm suggesting that we offer $10,000 to help bring the road up. We've already done some work, but there is additional work that needs to be done. There's, at this point in time, there's culverts that are clogged up, that water can't get through, the ditches, most of the ditches we've already cleaned out. However, there's a hump between this edge of the road and the ditch, so the water can't get into the ditch. So that needs to be removed and addressed. And so those are the items that they're looking at for that 10,000, or the $20,000, 18, I'm sorry, $18,000 that they're asking us to pay. And that's on the entire mile. I'm suggesting we come halfway, $10,000.
How often do they meet?
They meet once a month. They meet the first Monday of the month.
And it's taken them since 2010 to come up with this?
They assumed that we were maintaining the road. It really hasn't gotten very bad until the last couple of years because it's been within the last two years that we've had these really significant 100-year rain events that have washed out the road and caused extreme potholes on that road. It's when it, when we get those heavy rains, you have, it's still passable, but you have to go about five miles an hour to get through it. And I wouldn't want to try driving through that in the dark because of the pothole situation. If, if I lived on that road, I wouldn't be happy. I would be trying to find, you know, going out of my way to avoid it and calling and complaining, which is exactly what these residents are doing. Since we don't have the agreement, I've been telling the residents they need to contact the township. The township is getting frustrated because they thought it was our responsibility to maintain. So we really want to try and work out an agreement. I'm really hopeful that we can come to some sort of agreement between us and the township because splitting maintenance of both of 127th and 53rd is gonna be a nightmare.
Let's don't do that again.
Well, in fact, we haven't identified the specific beginning and end of their agreement like that.
Sounds good.
You would think that two engineers would be able to look at the same problem and come up with an amicable, you know, idea as to what is fair for both sides as well as the attorneys. The attorneys should also be able to talk together and do that. It seems, maybe I'm just jumping to a conclusion, but it seems that they're not being as reasonable as they could.
That, that was Ty and I's kind of perspective walking out of there because they assumed that they, they continued to maintain our portion of 127th that we should have continued to maintain their portion of 53rd, but unfortunately, or fortunately, our staff saw it differently. So now we're in this situation.
Well, they don't have full-time staff, do they?
They have one full-time staff member, right. It's my understanding. And then they have a few part-time.
Yeah.
So we have full-time staff. We have more full-time staff, but a lot of their-
Well, but still the township commissioners, if that's what they're called, if they're meeting once a month, they've heard this multiple times and done nothing until it sounds like we maybe put a step forward or-
And I think most of the time, we've just been going out and grading the road and that's quieted the complaints. You know, material services and talking to senior staff members, they don't ever recall putting material down on the township's half. Memory is faulty, but I, I don't know what happened. But it, the township really, to my own knowledge, the township hasn't really gotten wind of it until the last year or two when I've told them, "You need to call the township, it's their road." So I, I, they just kind of, "Well, nobody's complaining about it, we're not gonna worry about it."
And we'd get a complaint, so we'd just, you know, crater go out there and grade it. But obviously it sounds like-
There, there's a lot more issues that just-
Some material that was put down that rather than just grading.
Right.
Although, you know, our staff realized or understood that the agreement was gone and that, you know, we didn't have to put material on that half, we'd just do it on ours.
What do we suggest? That we call it an outside contractor and ask contractors and ask them to place bids on doing what both Bel Air and the city and the township agree upon and see what they, see what they come up with. That way, that would give somebody, it would be a shame to do that to a contractor and not, not award the lowest bid or something. But it would give you, you know, we could actually pay a contractor to come out or pay two contractors, just give them a straight contract, tell us what it's gonna need to do this and tell us what you think it'll cost and then show them. I, I don't know how much that would cost us and if a contractor would be willing to do it or not, but at least it would be-
That, that's a good idea, but yet I think I'd rather go with Ann's estimate of 10,000.
Oh, yes. I thought, sure, I would too, but that way would-
Yeah, I don't see contractors coming out and bringing out their equipment.
We might get in beat that way.
Well, if council is comfortable, we, maybe Ann and I have talked about, you know, basically what she said, if you're comfortable with us going back to them or proposing, say, "We talked, we talked to the council, they're comfortable doing this and if they stick to the no, it's gonna cost 18, then maybe we look at, okay, well, we need to do a little bit more research on this."
Yeah, that would be when we- Don't tell them we're uncomfortable with it.
Okay.
Tell them that we thought their idea was out of whack and was too much and here's our-
Here's our proposal.
Here's our proposal and, you know, take it or leave it.
They may leave us.
Well, if they take over, if it goes back to everybody maintaining their own, they're left with a road that needs a lot of maintenance. So we're, I, we're going a little over half. We're trying to help out and be good neighbors because I want to get rid of that, those roads. But I'm not, I don't think it's fair to the city to be responsible for bringing that entire road up to a condition that's over and above. But I'm not, I don't think it's fair to the city to be responsible for bringing that entire road up to a condition that's over and above what our citizens have.
That's right. We've got roads right here in the city that need that work done.
And we're, I'm going to be addressing it when Dave returns from vacation.
You let him go?
Well, he's a good employee and he needs some time. I think this was his anniversary, so, you know.
All right. Any other questions for our city engineer or twenty or?
For your work on that, Anne.
Thank you. Hopefully this works out.
Yes. We're, we'll keep working on it.
All right. Now, even though Ty asked us all to bring our budgets with us, um,
I missed that. I, I considered bringing it with me and then I thought, well, who knows?
Yeah, I didn't bring mine either, so.
Did you have a budget in there, Ted? Or is that just your?
I got, I got all kinds of stuff.
I almost brought it.
You're fine.
Can I get you one, girl?
Sorry.
Little last workshop.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I, I looked at the agenda, so I made a cheat sheet for you as well, so we can work off both of these.
Oh, I think I have.
I need a, sorry, buddy.
Is that the same thing?
Uh, yeah, I meant pretty much. I, I had a few changes, but you can see at the bottom I dated them, so you can
Oh, yeah, okay.
There you go.
So again, it looks nice, reminding people at home and also all of us, and we're still about to, what, about six, seven weeks ahead of schedule?
We are.
So I don't feel that we gotta solve everything right now, but just, so I appreciate all the extra
Sure. And, and May, I kind of went over the basic overview of our, of our budget and, um, pretty much the importance of our ending balance. And it kind of affirmed this week when we got our S and P rating back, um, we maintained A-plus rating. And the main positive is our ending balance and our liquidity, um, ability to address. Of course, our debt is the only downside of our city and that, and that's, uh, and that's to be expected. However, once we retire that debt, our rating's going to go up. And, and that's why I watch our ending balance so close like a hawk because I know that affects our developments, affects everything in our rating because we get a better interest rate. The other realization I thought last council meeting is pretty funny is we're not heavy spenders on a lot of things. We prioritize and we, we run our, our city that way. Um, and that's how we do our budget. Uh, I thought it was funny how Anne had to say, well, we have to wait till all our employees are back from vacation before we try a big project. That really doesn't indicate that we're overloaded, uh, overloaded, uh, public works or any kind of personnel, um, that we have to wait for sick doctor's appointments. But, uh, anyway, we'll get started. Uh, you can follow along with me on the cheat sheet here or on the budget, whichever way you prefer. Uh, we're going to start with revenues, which is page two of the, uh, regular budget. Uh, last week, we got the county estimates, which is what, um, every municipality goes off of when they turn in their budgets to the state, is the county estimates for their ad valorem tax. Um, and that shows how our assessed valuation. Now, our assessed valuation grew seven point six three percent is estimated, um, by the, by the county, which is really good. Uh, again, another over seven percent growth. Uh, last year, we were about the same at this time, um, or four million dollars in growth. Um, what that does is my previous budget had my estimate, which was estimate, which is about seven percent. Um, but we have to go by the counties, so seven point six three. So we found another about fifteen thousand dollars, uh, that we can budget, uh, with, um, going forward. So keep that in the back of your mind. Everything else, I, I budget based on actuals and what I, what I believe, uh, we're going to do, um, the upcoming year. Um, county sales tax, um, the, uh, average, uh, growth rate of that's about three percent, so I, I budget at three percent. Just going down the cheat sheet, cheat, uh, cheat sheet, franchise fees are, are pretty, uh, regular. Um, I, I did include water and sewer franchise fees we do every year. A lot of times, we don't have the money in the budget to actually transform them, but we always budget for them. Uh, because we do spend, I spend a lot of time on utilities, Ty spends a lot of time on utilities. Um, really, the only clerk we have that is downstairs is our utility clerk, but all the ladies downstairs take payments and, and do a lot of those issues. Fines and fees, I, I just incremental change from the twenty seventeen budget. I will tell you, we are, we're up a little bit on that because I do keep monthly reports on, uh, how we're doing on those fines and fees. Permits, I did add a little bit more to the administrative fee. These are all IRB. Uh, we have administration fees for IRBs, everyone we collect. We're starting to grow some of the, in that, in the Commerce Park, so we need to, our budget needs to reflect that. Recreation and pool, um, lowered a little bit of the recreation program fees, but increased the pool fees. Uh, as you guys know from previous discussions on the budget, our pools did really well last year and we hope to continue, uh, that growth. Uh, grants, about the same. Um, our K H E waste tire grant, I just turned in the, um, final, um, remittance for that. So that, that'll go away, but I think the Bella or the Central Park, uh, playground looks really good. And I was glad we got to utilize that. Miscellaneous total, again, I don't think that, I guess I might print it on the other side. Yeah, there you go. Miscellaneous total, I don't, I don't budget very much because you never want to be, uh, counting on miscellaneous revenue. If we want to, we can go to page two of our cheat sheet. And that's page four of our budget, which is administration expenses. Administration department is pretty much the city manager, finance director, city attorney, city treasurer, administration, and, and one administrative assistant or our front desk clerk. We did move the senior coordinator out of the administration, um, personnel. That's why you'll see a slight dip in that. We're actually going to fund her out of the, um, senior coordinating project. That's one thing I guess I didn't mention on the grants is we're, we're going to increase our, our grant for the seniors, uh, from Sedwick County this, in twenty eighteen to about thirty-two thousand instead of the eighteen I think that we're getting right now, but
I thought they were sending thirty-seven fifty.
Maybe that's what it is. I, I got to look again, but
Yeah, it's, uh, we, uh, we're at a senior level two or whatever it is. And, um, because of the amount of activities and such that we've been having, we were able to, we applied for and were able to receive senior level three funding or whatever the next step is, which is thirty-seven five, we'll be getting now, so.
I think my conservative mind just went to that.
On the senior center, our, our, uh, our programs have continued on at the same rate. Hasn't been any significant change.
Right, right.
And so we do qualify for that thirty-seven fifty.
Because to get that increase, you have to actually offer those services for like two years prior to getting the grant. So we've actually been doing that and now we were able to apply for it because we've actually been providing those and, and we got it. That is if Sedwick County continues to fund the senior
There were some concerns expressed, as you know.
Oh, boy.
Yep, yep.
I just said, go top to Ty.
The other thing I do want to mention is the health and dental, uh, expenses. I, I estimated a, a five percent increase on this original budget. I, uh, I might, um, look at what a ten percent increase is going to do, just to play it on the safe side. I think that would be wise of us. Um, hopefully, federal government will make some kind of action or, uh, we don't know. But there's still a lot of uncertainty with it and we're just not really sure what's, uh, the premiums are going to do. I'm in constant contact with my, uh, our provider to ask what, you know, what are you thinking, what, what's going to happen. So once I know any different, but I might take a look at our budget at a ten percent increase on health, just to be on the safe side.
Do we still have Blue Cross Blue Shield?
Blue Cross Blue Shield. But we just switched back to them, uh, because they came in at a lower rate. We just switched, uh, providers.
And what's the dental?
Uh, Delta's dental.
Delta.
Yeah. They haven't increased their rates, I think, for two or three years on us, so that's been pretty stable.
They have vision or that's up to the employee?
Uh, it's up to the employees. It's a hundred percent funded by the employees. Um, and we went to a hardware vision so that because you're, nowadays, all the health insurance, uh, covers eye exams. Um, so really, if you want any kind of vision insurance, it'd be the hardware and contacts that you would want.
I want a little sidebar here, just to let everybody know, I'm thinking about it now, the CCUA had a workshop last Thursday mainly to go over health insurance for the CCA because of, um, the interns that are CCM employees, which are, what, four of them? That no longer falls under the ACA. Everybody loved that insurance, but they can't have it anymore because it no longer falls, uh, along ACA guidelines, so
It's too expensive if they got it.
No, no, the insurance they had was really cheap, but now they have to go to an ACA-approved plan. So we may be looking at a, at what we're going to do with our water bills because of the health insurance increases just to CCUA, so that you're not alone. And I'd say ten percent would be, uh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not fun.
On the contractual side of things, really not much change for the, this, uh, department. I increased utilities by five hundred and usually that just kind of goes on actual norms. You'll notice a theme in, um, my presentation here tonight. Liability insurance, uh, we did add a nice cyber liability policy last year, so that increased some of our premiums. However, as you know, Lonnie presented a fourteen thousand dollar check, which more than covered that, uh, cyber liability premium. However, uh, we can't guarantee on that because basically what that is, is the pool, pools all municipalities and says, how much did we pay out in damages this past year? Oh, we didn't pay out very much? Okay, let's give some back. So if we have one bad year, one municipality in Western Kansas gets blown away or something, uh, then we won't receive that fourteen thousand. So we have to budget for the, you know, the actual cost of liability insurance. So that, that's one of those things. You'll see a theme of, you know, it'll go up and down a little bit as, as we go through this. Everything else is pretty standard in the administration side, um, of things. And we can flip over to, uh, planning and zoning unless anybody has a
Anybody have any comments or any questions on administration?
Planning and zoning, page five of the, uh, budget and page two still of the cheat sheet. This is one where a little increase in personnel expenses mainly because we promoted our, uh, planning, uh, assistant to city clerk. That's a lot more responsibility. Also, you know, we did our, our salary adjustments in, uh, last year and, uh, some of those hit our, uh, some employees within the planning and zoning. Um, yeah, again, you create little increases in utilities and liability, uh, just to reflect the growth of the department, um, gaining an extra employee last year.
Is our code enforcement?
Code enforcement's in there as well, yeah.
So the guy we hired, the code enforcement officer.
Jason's in there too. Thank you, Ty. One thing I do have, uh, for you in this kind of first one, I meet with every department head and I'll hear a lot of proposals and I'll reject some. And some I'll say, that makes some sense, we might be able to do that. I'll bring it to, in front of the council. Keith proposed, um, in his office equipment, uh, line item, to purchase a TSC three controller, and that's on page three of our, um, cheat sheet. And what this does is pretty nifty. We have all the software, but he just takes this, it's pretty much a camera, a smart camera. And he can go along our new development, say, um, sidewalks. He can go along all the new development sidewalks and it plots the whole sidewalk for him. So when he gets back to his office, he knows every measurement of every sidewalk in our city of every street. He can even do trees if he wants to. Uh, what does this do for him is when someone calls and asks how far back does he have to be from, you know, uh, for variance or whatnot, he can just look it up on his computer instead of going out there, taking a tape measure and drawing it out. Um, so really what he, he likes about it is it saves him a lot of time and, and for a really pretty reasonable price, he thinks. Also, now that we do have a, you know, Jason, our, um, code enforcement officer, he can take that out with him too. And, and while he's out, um, evaluating properties or whatnot, he can shoot some, you know, some new, uh, new developments or even our current existing that haven't been mapped, uh, with the correct ways.
That little thing will do that?
That little thing will do that.
That awesome.
And I, I think he's been watching our council meetings.
That's amazing.
I think he's been watching our council meetings because he stayed, he stuck his head in my office and said, now, if we have a farmer's market, they can plot that exact location. We can send it out and, uh, and it'll have the, the exact GPS location for their phones to go right to it. So we can go out in the middle of a cornfield and they can find us, he said.
That's amazing.
But, uh, so that's something to, for you to consider. This is already in my proposed budget, so really, um, when we get a talk in, maybe next, uh, you can say, hey, I don't agree with it or, or you can talk about it now. It's just a matter of
It's twen, just twenty-five hundred to purchase that one?
Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's
Quite a bargain.
I can't, I'm, I'm thinking of the time alone, how many hours we can add to its availability by
That's amazing.
It's twenty-five hundred bucks, yeah.
And I believe, and I know where Tree City USA, he can actually map trees as well, uh, and tree growth patterns and whatnot. And this is, yeah.
Now, this thing isn't going to be like a telephone, that you have to get a new one.
No, no.
Can we all use it, please?
But we'll, we'll see. I, I hope I didn't commit Keith to too much stuff, but, uh,
Does he have to go to school to learn how to use it?
I think he, he's well aware of it. I, I didn't know what a TSC three controller was before we sat down, so
I think it's a protection plan.
Yeah, yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, so now, if nobody has any questions about, uh, uh, planning and zoning expenses, we can move to court. Really, court, uh, one of the main things you'll see is in the twenty seventeen budget, we paid for our judge, our personnel, um, expense, expenses. And, uh, with our new judge, he'd rather just have us cut him a check to his firm instead of payout, actually in payroll. It's a lot more convenient for my office, so we're said gladly. Um, so you'll just see that, that, that kind of shift, um, from our personnel to our contractuals. The difference in twenty seventeen to twenty eighteen budgets is, uh, one thousand five hundred and fifty dollars. So really not much change in the court, um, other than, other than like I just talked about. Anybody else have anything?
I was wondering, when you were talking about our court fees and fines and stuff like that, why is that going up?
One of the reasons is, um, we've got more officers. So, oh, because over the last year, we've had typically, we've been down two to three officers because, you know, they'll leave, uh, go to another, uh, place. Or, um, whatever the reason may be why they left. And so we hire someone and a lot of times they'll have to go to the academy to be trained.
Don't hurt them.
We, uh, uh, yeah, and we always look for ones that have already been trained. And, uh, so, you know, we're competing with other police departments, municipalities, counties and such. And, and so we've been down two, three officers and that's two or three officers that aren't out, um, doing any kind of enforcements or anything like that. And we're finally, I believe, at full staff now.
I just wondered, because we had asked them to write more, uh, warning tickets, you know?
And I know the chief was just talking to me, um, a couple of weeks ago, that with his new software that he's got, that digital ticket stuff, he can monitor that. And he's actually noticed, uh, he looks at off, different officers and, um, he, I think he told me, I don't remember what the percentage was, but we write more warnings than tickets.
Good. I'm glad to hear that.
He was tracking that.
Yeah. I think that makes us a lot more friendly community and, uh, I'm in favor of that.
And what's interesting with that software as well is that they can, they can note in there that they pulled someone over for speeding and they gave them one. So they may get a ticket because they can pull up and say, well, officer so-and-so gave you a warning, three months ago for speeding on the same street.
You only get so many warnings.
This time you're getting a ticket. So, um, which is great about the software that they can do.
One of the officers was leaving a sticker on the window of somebody else. I was coming here tonight. And I hadn't really noticed that it was disabled or what have you, but, and maybe it was just parked incorrectly. I don't, I didn't stop and ask him what he was doing, so. But, um, I know my street has sort of become like a car lot all of a sudden. You know, and there's only parking on one side of it because it's so narrow anyway. Um, but we have, um, a home with a disabled vehicle in the, uh, driveway. Uh, it's been sitting there for a month. It's been sitting there for months. Are they allowed to write tickets for that, or is that zoning?
No, if it's the zone, yeah, the disabled piece would be the zone, so that would be something that Jason would take care of. They all have to be licensed, so if that car's, you know, disabled and they haven't tagged it, then yes, we can notify them that it has to be registered.
There's a car over on Janesville, he's got a brick behind the back tire, and the front tires are flat, and he's sitting on the street. It's an old, old car. It's probably an antique. He's tried to sell it. He used to have it in the driveway, but I noticed the other day it's out in the street now.
Well, I can visit with Jason and have, tell him that there's some of that out there, it looks like maybe some disabled cars and...
Well, and, you know, I mean, I'm not home often enough, but, you know, I gotta have one morning, and there were four cars parked along, you know, I mean, my cars are in the garage, my neighbor's cars are in the garage, the people who live next to that have a carport in the garage, and, but they have a couple of extra people evidently who are staying there, and so there were four cars parked along my side of the street. Now, I had kind of grassed the chief about the time the police officer blocked my driveway, which is a very dangerous intersection because people come barreling around there. And, you know, I was being a little bit more facetious and what have you, but since he parked right in front of my driveway, and I couldn't get in, well, I blocked him from getting out.
But, yeah, there isn't anything in zoning or anything that would limit the number of cars someone can have, or street parking, other than if we were to implement some type of, you know, no parking on a certain side, or between certain hours or something.
Yeah, you've already got that.
But you don't have signs up anymore. That went away, didn't it? No parking?
As far as I know, it's still no parking on the north side.
There's no signs on that side?
Well, if so, they took them down when they were doing the street construction and didn't put them back up.
We'll have to look into that and see, 'cause typically there's an ordinance that...
'Cause, yeah, it'd always been that way, but they took them down when they did the street construction because they had to park. Some of them had to park them.
So maybe they're not back up yet.
They should've just put a bag over them, rather than take them down.
Yeah, I don't know. I'll look and see if they're down.
I didn't think they were up anymore, but they could put them down.
Okay, sorry, I...
We're on parks and grounds, page three of the, or page four of the cheat sheet, page seven of the budget. Parks and grounds is part of the public works department. Their employees are split between this department, water, sewer, and streets. This particular department funds our city arborist and one equipment operator. For 2018, I used to have three employees in this fund. I moved one to sewer because I talked to Dave, reflect their workflow, and what's, who's doing what, and that's what he thought was, we were spending more time on our utilities than actual this park, so it's an ever-changing, if we do something really big in parks one year, we'll move an employee into the parks because that's where we use them, so it makes a lot of sense, hopefully. Decreased a little bit of liability and liability insurance, or I guess remained the same, decreased a little, I don't know why I put that there, sorry. And then, I guess commodities with, I increased a little bit, and safety equipment, last year we had a poison IV problem when we were mowing ditches in parks that, I don't know if it was parks, it was more ditch.
They were doing something in a ditch, and they all got poison IV.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah, yeah.
Really?
Yeah, it was...
Even though they were sitting on the tractor or whatever?
No, they had gotten off the tractor to do something, maybe weeding or something.
They do weed eating.
They were actually in that.
So basically, we want to fund long gloves and whatnot, so that that doesn't happen again, and it's pretty minimal. The big part on parks is kind of their capital outlay. One thing Dave in our meeting did express that they use their, I don't know, he has a term for it, but it's pretty much a golf cart with a dump, with a ability to dump bed on it. They have one, and they use it almost daily. It breaks down numerous times throughout the year, and he'd like to purchase a new one, he thinks, and he got a quote for it, just under $9,000, and this is something that we can spread throughout water, sewer, and parks. It's up for your consideration. Basically, he just hates to keep throwing money at the current one, and if we can get a newer one, he thinks it'll improve that line item of vehicle equipment and repairs a little bit. The other thing he suggests, and it's on page five of the cheat sheet, is a scoop, I think it's $1,000 for our Central Park playground. They have a lot of sand that they want to create a big sandbox, leftover from the material that they dug out to put in the rubber surface. Another thing he asked the council for their consideration for is, we redid some draining in the Central Park playground, and he realized how great that was, and Bel Air Park needed some extra draining as well, so relatively, when you consider the budget, $2,000 to improve the drainage for that park, Bel Air Park would, he thought would be well worth the investment. So those are his three items for your consideration, and feel free to discuss it now, or take it home with you, and we can, we got one more, one more budget workshop where we really need to make decisions.
One, that Kishman golf court thing, what do they, how do they use that in the wintertime?
Yeah, they have a snow blade that they hook onto, and they come and do city hall and the rec center, and things like that, and I know they use, for the parks, I know they like to dump it, is because they don't want to take their big trucks and stuff out there, so they put sand, or dirt, or mulch in this, and then they drive it out on the park to dump it, and then they don't have big trucks driving it out, that's why they like it.
What are they gonna do with their old one?
Purple Wave or...
Yeah, either...
Continue to use it, I would assume.
Well, they'll probably sell it on Purple Wave or trade it in. It depends on, they'll look at both, you know. Usually what they do is they say, "Well, what will you give us if we trade it in?" And then if they say, "We'll give you 500," and then they go to Purple Wave auction, and if they're selling for 1,000, then we'll keep it, sell it on Purple Wave, so, but they'll get rid of it somehow, whichever they get the most out of it.
And, yeah, and again, that, it would probably, the price decreases once you sell equipment, but I, but we have to reflect the regular one. Without any questions, we can move to the police budget, which is, Police Department is one of, is our biggest budget in our general fund. This is where police officers, I think I had, we have 13 full-time, or 12 full-time, one part-time police officers, I guess we have a police chief, lieutenant detective, nine PD officers, and one part-time officer. This is a department that we try to budget a little higher on their personnel side, because what happens is, is if one employee, one police officer would happen to leave, and we hire a new one in, we're not sure what kind of benefits if that officer that left weren't accepting our health care. One came on and they did accept it, we'd have to cover that in our budget, and I just, I try to tend on the side of caution when we deal with larger departments like this. So you'll notice a little increase in the Police Department personnel expenses, and that's mainly to ensure that we can fund all these, any kind of activity, any kind of officers that may, any turnover, I guess.
That's $100,000 different.
For the whole budget, yeah, the whole budget, yeah.
I thought on vehicle equipment lease purchase that we were gonna quit doing that.
And we'll get down to that, Betty, or do you want to address that now?
No, I thought you were finished, sorry.
Okay, no, no, it's all right. We're gonna do contractuals. I just made a note, a lot of things that you guys like to know is, you know, what about contractual services? Digital ticketing's about $12,500, and that's what we were talking about with Ty, that they can track, and then it goes straight, it saves a lot of time as well on our processing side. Body cam storage is about $4,000, copier leases, new hire background checks, and then all the other regular, pest control, Sentos has mats and whatnot. Liability and utility, small increases on there. On the commodity side, I talked to chief, and this is on page six.
Sign, and you can move them. So he thought he could put them on, well, put some, during school, put them on Woodlock, so people could, and then during the summer, move them to 45th Street and, or Webb Road or somewhere, and so you can move them around. The other thing he said he was gonna try to do, but he couldn't guarantee it, is he was gonna try a grant to see if he could get a couple of them, or something like that. So we may be able to get, you know, for, and only spend half the money, or none of the money, but he's gonna try to get a grant, and he thought he knew a place he might be able to, but if he can't, then that's why he thought he could, if council would consider putting in a capital outlay, and we would know next year, if he got the grant, then of course we wouldn't spend the money for it, we have them.
That's good.
During school time, nobody can speed.
Yeah, don't grade rush hour. No, you sit at the corner of your, the end of your driveway and honk your horn. I went out in here.
Well, probably reduce our income, traffic tickets, because on that Memorial Day weekend, man, the sirens did not stop. Forty-fifth and Woodlock, boy, the officers were working overtime the whole weekend.
Well, we just, we, I think we're over it, but we were in, we participate in the Click It or Ticket program, and that's a statewide ticket, so you may have, if you were out traveling, you would, might have saw the Click It or Ticket signs and all the social media and stuff, because we, actually, people were calling us, saying, "Well, I just got pulled over for no seatbelt." And, well, number one's the law.
Where are your seatbelt?
Number two, we participate in Click It or Ticket because we get grant money, I mean, reimbursement for labor to do that, to participate in it, and so, you know, we were just participating, so that's probably why you heard a lot of activity.
I heard a lot, sorry.
Next department, if we move on, is Recreation Department, page nine of our budget, page seven of our cheat sheet. Not much change in here, hardly any. We, you know, decreased equipment a little bit. I think historically, we haven't been spending as much on equipment, so now it's time, once you see two or three years of that, you lower your, you lower your budget amount, and that's why I try to stress to our department heads, is if you don't spend it, just let me know, and we'll lower it, and it'll, everything will be fine, it doesn't mean it's going away, you know? So I think, I think that Brian really took that to heart, and I'm glad, glad he did. Pretty much no change.
What's the community relations slash event? Went from 200 to 1,000?
Yeah, that's, basically, I was reflecting the norm, the community relation event is the father-daughter dance, and what happened there was, it was, it was a, all the, everything was donated to it, but we needed an expense line to spend the money first to set up the decorations and whatnot, but we got all the money spent back in our donations line on the revenue side. So basically, you're seeing one, one end of the, one end of the accounting equation would be the expense going out, but you're not looking at the revenue coming in, which matches the expense going out.
I thought that was under the community development.
So did I, but I believe we did it out of rec, because we're trying to get program fee, it's supposed to help foster program fees, or, you know, let people know about rec. That was something that I learned in this budget season.
Tristan helps with it, but it, it's really a rec program or rec activity that they put together.
Okay, if there's no more question, we can move to the senior center, and we touched on this a little bit. And it's on page eight of the cheat sheet, page 10 of the budget. We did move the senior director's position into this department this year. We increased a little of the contractuals to reflect that, that person moving, because everything's tied to how many employees they have, so if you have one more employee in your department, your liability insurance is gonna go up a little bit because it's tied to that. We did increase the, increase the events budget by, I think, $500 to reflect the need to have, I think, two more events than what we have right now to stay compliant with the grant, so we need to give money for that, but all in all, not much change, other than those areas. Any questions on this one?
I just wondered, has the senior club ever asked for any increase in what they get, because, you know, they donate quite a bit as far as numbers to getting the grant and everything, and I just wondered if that's equitable.
They haven't, although I have a meeting set up with them the end of the month to go over their semi annual report, and so I can ask them.
I think we should, probably. Now, we had another one die today, or pass away, I should say. Now, is Brian still the senior, whatever he wa, director, and Genie is under him?
No, that's what we, with the change to going to this next level and getting the full funding, because originally, it was, that's why the salary increased, because she only worked part-time for the senior center, her, half her salary came out of the senior center, and then she was also helping with administration, some out rec and things like that, so when we got this new grant, that's where, when Ted's saying, you know, we brought the position into the senior centers, or the senior center fund, is that all of her salary now is coming out of there, and, yes, she's going to, Brian and I had talked about the fact that, you know, now that she's gonna be basically full-time with the senior center, could she actually take on most of the duties of the senior director? And he said, yes. Now, he's still going to help. If she needs help, he's going to, the senior club actually meets out there with him, so he'll still work with the senior club, but she'll handle all the senior center activities.
Okay, if we want to move on to mayor and council budget, which is on page 11 of the budget and page eight of the cheat sheet. Not a lot of change here. Increased a little bit, just basically so we can account, it's better accounting when I moved re- membership dues to the council and mayor council budget, and then we've been paying a lot of our ordinance, so when we have to publish any kind of ordinance inside the Ark Valley, we would charge some to administration, some to non-departmental. I'd just rather have it all in council, because it makes sense, and that's where you can find it. For me, coding every, every invoice that comes back from Ark Valley, it's just a little easier to put one code, and we can do it. But that's, that's how that goes. If anybody has any questions on this budget, we can move forward.
If you all wanted to raise...
Yeah, yeah.
I was gonna say, that looks like we might be making some money.
Non-departmental, page 12 of the budget, nine of the cheat sheet, and this is where we're talking on the personnel for non-departmental. I pay Marcy, our insurance broker, $500 a month, and she becomes a very valuable asset to me on any time we're renegotiating any kind of health insurance deal, and she knows the ins and outs of everything, she knows what it should cost, and hopefully, she more than made up for her salary last year, and we'll continue to monitor that. She also helps me a lot, and if an employee has a complicated... She also helps me a lot, and if an employee has a complicated question that maybe I don't know all about, that she, they have, our city has a resource that can go to, that Marcy can answer any question they might have. If something traumatic happens, you know, if they get diagnosed with cancer, God forbid or something, we can have somebody to walk them through the steps, how the insurance company is going to handle it and whatnot. So I think that's a really good asset.
So she actually works for the insurance company?
No, no, she's independent. It's much like our ICI, Lonnie. He goes out and finds the best deal for us on our insurance. Well, Marcy, she finds out the best deal for us on our, on our health and dental. She also helps me a lot with any kind of, if there's, and Jackie's going to help out a lot, any kind of new HR trend that's going on, she's really in track with a lot of that. So I would suggest continue to fund her, just for those sakes there, and I'll keep the committee up to date, or the council up to date on that. On contractuals, you'll see reduced computer support services line to reflect the actuals. This is the line item where we pay our IT consultant, our IT, we call him Tom, contractor. So he'll come every Wednesday. Paul in OneSource, this is where that comes out of.
And we've been pretty happy with OneSource, though.
Yeah, it's, it's always an adjustment going from a full-time staff IT to a contractor. As you can see, the city saves a lot of money doing that. However, our employees will be a little more patient when something happens. However, I tell you what, if, you know, we had the boil order in effect, and our internet, our Intranet went down that Saturday, and he was there right, 10 o'clock in the morning and fixed it for us on Saturday. So if something tragic happens, we get it fixed fast, and that's what I like about that company.
And Paul, we're talking about that. Have we ever gotten a system where we have everything backed up someplace out of house?
Everything, everything, everything is already backed up in Arizona, I believe.
Okay, good.
So, yeah. We opted for, so there's two types of backup. One type is cloud-based, and it's really expensive, and if it goes down, you'll get it back in less than a day. The little less expensive version that we're getting is if everything goes down, we'll get it back, but it might take a couple days, or, you know, it's really a matter of timing, which Ty and I both thought we were more than fine to go without an email, or like a history of our emails for one or two days. This is also the budget where we have the transfer outs for our city hall debt, our pool debt. New, the 2018 would be our transfer out for our new street debt that's coming out. Also, our, our transfer to equipment reserve, our capital improvement reserve, and then our proposal of maybe moving $150,000 to street improvements for, street improvements out of the general fund.
We can't get any more than that?
We can look, but that's pretty much what, what I think what we'll talk about later on, is we're going to transfer some more money from a different fund to help with street improvements.
Thing that hurts us is we, the street improvements we did three years ago, like Forty-Fifth Street and Edgemore and stuff, we borrowed those, and now the debt's hitting us.
That was 100,000.
So those are 100,000 a year for 10 years. So we're, in effect, paying 100,000 a year for street improvements that were already done. So, yeah.
And I'm grateful for that.
Yeah, we really didn't have much.
I don't like it.
Didn't help you.
I didn't notice. I think we need to look for a little bit more to go into streets. Quite a bit more. Because we did 400,000 last year.
This is just to pay the debt.
This isn't street improvements.
This is just on that debt.
No, the 150 we'll transfer to first.
The 150 goes to streets.
Oh, I thought you were talking about the 100. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry, yeah.
Well, that's what our, our residents have asked for, is more money for street improvement.
And so really, the two options we've talked about is, one is, you know, we've not proposed any mill increase, which if we proposed a one-mill increase, and you could dedicate it directly to streets, and that's where it would go, that would bring in probably another 50,000 that we could do streets.
20,000, not much.
Yeah. Or we would look at, you know, go back to the individual departments and say, you know, we want to cut by 50,000 or whatever, and look at where we would have to eliminate services or, you know, expenses in other departments to put it towards. That's really our two options, if you want to put more towards streets. Now, like Ted's saying, is this is, we're transferring out of general fund 150,000, but then we're also looking at transferring some out of.
Solid waste.
Solid waste, too. Which was how much?
I believe 100.
100,000. So in the end.
It was 250 total?
Yeah, another 250 going into the street fund. But only 150's coming out of.
I thought that solid waste thing was supposed to repair water lines and stuff like that.
The storm, well, no, the stormwater is supposed to, you know, pay for culverts and drainage issues and stuff like that. The, the solid waste is trash. And so when we bring in trash, we charge some administrative fees for that. And so that fund has been building up those administrative fees that we felt that that's because the trash trucks go up and down the streets and.
That's right.
Are going to cause probably the worst problems in the streets, then that fund should pay for some of the street repairs.
That makes sense.
That's where, where that came from.
So we're talking a total of a quarter million, 250,000's going to go towards street repairs.
And then I think there's a little bit, is there some also in the street fund? We haven't got there yet.
Close street fund, okay.
Yeah. But it is down from what we said this year.
Well, and if you remember, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
If you remember, when I started this conference, I said our ending balance is the most important thing, to make sure we get a good rating and good interest rate. And our ending balance right now is 30%, which is what our finance policy said it should be. Last year at this time, it was at 50%. So what we did was, took a little money out of our savings account and threw it to streets. Now that this year, we don't have that room anymore, we got to find it within our regular budget.
What about asking the department heads to take down 5% and adding that to streets?
I can work it up, if that's what the council wants. Now, yeah.
I'm the only one that said anything, you guys, what do you think?
Streets are important. People are concerned about the streets, there's no doubt, that they want us to put as much money in streets as possible. That was one of the top items. I was in favor of some of the expenditures here, particularly of the signs and so on, and I'm not against that. But a 5% cut is not, I don't think it's unreasonable. So I would, I would be in favor of that.
Well, we did it with 10% two years ago, and they, they got along fine. I just, I don't want salaries cut, but.
No.
5%. I don't know how much that would be.
What we could do for the next workshop is we could go back to the department heads and say, okay, tell us what you would do if we had to cut 5%. And then we could bring that to you, and then we would know exactly how much that would give us to put towards streets, because I don't know, do you have any idea what a 5% would give us towards streets? We could figure that out, say, you know, that's another 100,000 or whatever that may be, and then, but, you know, the parks may not do this or something, and that way you can kind of look at the repercussions.
It would be easier for some departments to do that, it would be for other departments.
We asked maybe for a proposal that has a minimum 5% then? Like I said, there's some departments that could. The reason why I say that, I hate cutting services, and I hate cutting into our, you know, budget where, and we've talked about it over and over, where our staff do more with less every day. But I hate the idea of raising taxes a lot more than I hate the idea of cutting that.
Not this year.
Not this year, not after what the state just went through and everything. I think, yeah, that would, we talked about the things that set Bel Air apart. How many years has it been since we've had a mill increase? Five? At least, at least six?
It's a long time.
You know, and that, because we used to hear, oh my gosh, water's so high, the taxes are so high. Everybody else is, and we're still here. If we could, I would be in favor of, I think, doing what, what Benny and Guy have said. If we could see a proposal with a minimum 5%, and we can have those hard discussions, and maybe there is, okay, this department, we're not going to cut, but this one, we will, from the 5%.
I think the, the cutting of what department should be left up to Ted, but I do not want, what do you call it, salaries.
And that's what discussion we're going to have, if you want.
Leave that out.
If you say no salaries.
Do you want layoff, I mean, you know, laying off?
No, no. I don't want, I don't want them to have to go through.
Okay.
The 5%, like we did when we did the 10%. We left salaries as they were.
Okay.
And, but the rest of the departments, I know they grumbled, but they got along fine, and we did 10%.
Okay, yeah, we'll do, we'll put that together and have that for you to consider.
Ted's got a frown on his face. Is it, is that going to be too small an amount, do you think?
No.
Dollar-wise, if we just do equipment and don't touch salaries, if we just cut expenditures in general, but leave salaries on, do you think we could still raise a significant amount of money for streets? Just a guess.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, we're looking, we spent $5 million out of our general fund, so you're looking at 200,000 and some change, if that, that's 5%. Half of that is debt payments, so I guess we can't do that. So, yeah, looking at everything. I would like some direction. Contractuals, I guess, that's, that's what we chose to cut 10% two years ago, and we did. But when you say just five, maybe we'll, I'll come back with some proposals for you. A lot of these line items can't go down too far, because like, you know, liability insurance, different things, utilities, some of our contractuals, our printer leases, and.
Get rid of them. Buy printers.
Yes.
We've been saying that.
Printers are cheap.
Buy five a week and still be ahead.
When the agreement, or when the contracts run out, we're going to look at that.
So I guess what we're saying, Ted, is we'd like to, if there is a way without really making it horrible, buy a few more bucks for streets.
Is there an amount you guys would say, I mean, maybe instead of 5%, we say, what how, what amount would you like to go? Another 100,000?
Well, I want to go more than that. We went 400,000 last year, or this year, wasn't it?
But again, that's because we have the extra from savings.
And so this year, we're proposing adding 250, so we're down 150 from what we had this year.
But previously before that, we, I mean, 250, we're spending a lot more than we ever had before. So 250 is, is a pretty major increase from regular years. Again, last year was a asker.
Well, and we're, we're making out for years when nothing was spent.
That's right.
So, I mean.
Well, I remember when Amy was here, thinking back, and we said, correct me if I'm wrong, but wasn't it, her proposal was about, give or take, 300,000 over four years, but pretty much fix just about all the majors?
I think it was more than that.
Was it okay?
Yeah. But, yeah, I mean, that, like, we're, Ted's going, if you'd like to stay at the 400,000, then that gives us an idea, and then maybe we could look at, you know, maybe this department can give up a little bit more, this one a little bit less, if you want to get to that 400,000 that we spent this year.
That sounds good.
That would be a better direction for me than.
Okay.
If we don't want to give you extra work.
No, no.
I'm probably a straight cut.
I think that's what Michelle did when she did that, didn't she?
Yeah, we did a straight across the board, 10%, I think it was. But if we go.
Yeah, but it wasn't every department.
Yeah, some of them got a little bit less, some of them a little bit more.
Yeah, see, we need to get as close as we can to 400.
Okay.
If we can, and then we'll compare and see if it's going to be worth it.
Then they can be mad at Ann. She's getting.
She'll be happy.
Yeah, well.
Well, we can all, should we also hear what we can do with the 250?
Pardon?
Well, she's already got that list.
Yeah, yeah, she's got the list.
And I think it is important to note that about 75% of our budget is debt and personnel. So it's really hard to.
To get five.
To get a lot of 5%, because we do have our debt. So that's what I'll be looking for, and I'll, I'll do what I can and tell you what we're cutting and how it'll affect our current employees, if that pleases the council. So I think we just did non-departmental. So now we'll go real fast through pool. I added $300 to the pool, so not much adjustment going on there. It's a pretty standard operation. If nobody has any questions on pool, we can go to community development, which is page 10 on our cheat sheet, and page 14 on our community development, on the budget. Personnel, funds our community development staff. Contractuals, you'll notice on our reimbursement line went up. This is, reflects actual reimbursements that we give, and this is all, this is the home, new home incentive contracts that we had in place, and we canceled in, at December of 2016, but we're still paying them, the five-year grant for building a home here in Bel Air. I tried to forecast the best I could, based on current home values and what I think they're going to be. So we'll be paying, it slightly, it goes down and disappears in fiscal year 2022. You can see on the cheat sheet on page 10 is where my forecast is. And so that's another item we can't cut, we can't touch, we have to pay those out as we're contracted to do so. One thing I did lower on the commodities are the events and community relations, only because we have about $1,000 by not attending the home show in 2018. I think we said we're not going to go back, so we'll save that money and send it to streets, maybe.
How many people in salaries? You went from 48 to 51.
Where are you at?
She's back at the top. That's just the regular, was that the raise to our, yeah, that's only one person there? Our marketing manager, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's reimbursements?
Those are new home incentives.
I thought we weren't doing those anymore.
We canceled accepting new ones, but we still have to pay out the five-year contract. So on the.
I think that, you know, there's a lot of money being spent on events and advertising and everything, and I don't know how effective it's being. I think we really need to take a look at the effectiveness of what we're doing. We need to evaluate that. I think we've got some issues there we need to talk about. Are we getting the bang for the buck?
This is one we'll look at very closely. If we're fine.
I appreciate that.
Well, I can see the salaries and the insurance and health and stuff, but, holy mackerel.
And again, I.
And what was the capital outlay?
Capital outlay is the community development resources, I guess. What we did last year's budget is allocate $10,000 for, I believe we were wanting to do some Christmas, some kind of community development, Christmas lights, banners, Christmas Christmas tree, that's what we're going to utilize it this year. This was a council decision, I kept it in there, just because I'm not going to go against the council.
Because they didn't put the Christmas tree where the council preferred to have it. And there's no Christmas lights and stuff on Woodlawn. We're going to get flags again, according to their, that one gentleman's letter on Woodlawn.
I think there's been some bad decisions there. I mean, you know, we asked for Christmas decorations, but putting a Christmas tree out here with all these other trees, I don't think was a very wise decision. We've already got tons of trees back here. You can hardly see that Christmas tree.
Oh, it's back there?
Yeah.
I've looked all over for that tree.
I've got a picture for where it is, but, you know, and we had trees up here that we could have used for a Christmas tree. If we wanted a Christmas tree, a new Christmas tree, we should have put it someplace where there wasn't already a lot of trees that would have worked, you know? And see, when I see the money being spent like that, I question, what's the decision-making process on where that went, you know? So I think we need to really take a good look at this budget.
So that $10,000 can go over into streets. I want more money in streets.
And that, you're right, that was, in the survey and stuff, that's what we heard, was that was a huge request with streets, improved streets, so, yep.
Land Department.
Okay, Land Department on page 15 of your budget, 11 of your cheat sheet. A lot of the contractuals are, contractual services are pretty much the cost-benefit analysis for our ROBs, development studies, easement procedures and purchases. We don't use this all the time, but it's good to have it budgeted in case something comes up where we need to use, you know, easement proceedings and whatnot. We can't foresee a lot of them. So we have it. HOA, or, yeah, CP1 HOA is pretty much just dye, a blue dye for the ponds, and then mowing.
Have we ever tried those, what's those fish?
Carp, grass carp.
Carp. Putting that in instead of that blue dye. I think it's cheaper to buy them and them grow big than it is that blue dye stuff.
Yeah, we'll, I'll ask Dave about that, see if they've put any in there or not, or look at, maybe, if that would be beneficial.
I think that blue dye'd kill them. I don't know.
Where is that blue dye? I'm here.
Well, I don't think it's on here, but...
CP1 HOA expenses.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've, you know, I've got some questions about that, too, although it does take a few years for those fish to get big, and sometimes you still need something else in addition to that, you know?
Yeah, I don't think, as far as I know, we haven't done anything with fish in there. There are fish there, but we, the city hasn't put any fish in there. Now, whether they put in carp, I don't know. I'll ask them about that.
See, they're like scavengers, so they would clean out that algae. And a lot of city parks, like that one down there at 29th, you come around off of 235 or 135, go on K-96, all those lakes over there don't have the algae.
Well, and the other thing that, this is just what I've learned from Dave and the parks, is a lot of the algae problems come from the fertilizer runoff.
Yeah.
You know, so, ones that are close to where people are mowing and fertilizing, they have more problems, so...
I've noticed that the city is now starting to let the grass grow around the ponds.
Yep, yep.
And I think that's great. We're doing that with our neighborhood pond, too.
And that's, that's a way that, hopefully, it stops the fertilizer from getting in the pond and causing algae and those problems.
Right, right.
Special assessments, and this is all for the PBC land, we pay all specials out of city-owned lots out of our land bank now, so that's that.
What's happened with Terra Verde now? Anything?
Still not...
We're still paying for it.
They're still...
That's right.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and that's some of the specials in there that, again, from what I understand, there's still issues with ownership and things like that. Although Jackie and I just had a talk today about this issue in that, you know, according to state law, that people have three years to pay their taxes and special assessments, and at that point, after three years, if they don't, then it will go to a sheriff's sale. And...
There's our 250.
And then what will happen is that whatever the property sells for, taxes are paid first, then specials. So I, Jackie, I told her that I wanted to make sure that she's monitoring any tax sales that, because what could happen is that, you know, we're covering the specials for that, and someone could come in and buy it.
They can slip bias.
Yep, slip bias, and then all those specials are gone. Worst case, which again is not what we're looking to do, but worst case would be for us to show up and buy them for a few thousand dollars, but at least we have the opportunity to sell them for something.
You mean, if somebody buys it as sheriff's sales, the specials go away?
Yep.
I wondered why that was on that sign up there in our neighborhood, that one, those lots there that are what we call the swamp.
Yep.
It says no specials, and I thought, how can that be?
Well, now, not all the specials, but the specials that are owed.
Just the ones owed. Then that guy, whoever bought that land has to start paying.
Yeah, so, so like, if you were to buy a house and someone hadn't paid the taxes or specials for two years, somebody would have to make amends. Either you would agree to do that, or the person selling would have to pay the taxes and special. Well, what happens is, then if it goes to tax sale, they say they're not going to do it, so the county takes over the property, and then they sell it, and whatever they get out for, get out of the property, then goes to pay specials first, and if there's any taxes first, and then if there's any specials, then it goes towards that, so... But typically, what happens is someone buys that for, you know, a residential lot for $1,000, and that lot may actually be worth $5,000. So if we had the opportunity to take that lot and make a few thousand to pay back to those specials that are owed us, it's worth it for us to do.
Gosh, that just doesn't seem right.
Yep.
That we get stuck holding the bag on that.
Well, that's what Jack did on some stuff that happened up north of Park City there.
Yep.
I mean, he just bought the lots.
Yep. And so, that's what we want to make sure is Terra Verde isn't the bad one, and they can say, oh, a lot of special.
We've got to be close to that three years, don't we?
Yes, and that's what we were talking about.
Well, I appreciate you guys thinking ahead and looking at that.
I'm glad we've got you full-time to keep an eye on that.
Yes, and all the goodness.
Are there any other lots that have been developed that are in that kind of state, in the homes and what have you?
Yes, I mean, that's, and that's what we were just talking about, is that in Central Park, there was a lot, if you, well, when you drive in, there's that, it says lot for sale by owner. Well, what had happened was, we sold that lot to someone, because of course, the city's a developer in Central Park, and we own the lot, and he was going to build a house there and realized that he didn't want to build the house here, couldn't do it, whatever, and just quit paying taxes and specials on it. So that ended up at a tax sale. Someone bought that lot, and it is now for sale by owner. And so, the two issues that I was explaining to Jackie, our concern is, is number one, now we have someone competing with us for lots, because someone owns that lot, and they're trying to sell it, we're trying to sell the rest of them. And the other piece of it is that we lost three years' worth of specials on that because it got sold for whatever amount, and we didn't get reimbursed for the specials.
And, but, any specials that are still owing?
Yes.
Can be collected?
So someone buys today, there's 12 years left on the special note, they assume the 12 years, but...
We lost out on the three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And so that's what I was saying, we've got to make sure that doesn't happen again, too.
Right.
But the other thing you could run into, and again, that's just a gamble of the whole development business, is you could have someone come in and buy it for $1,000 and sit on it for another three years. So again, that's where it might be in the best interest of the city to go ahead and take that, so at least we can get a house built on there.
Is there any way that we can have an ordinance, or like in a covenant neighborhood, you can say, if you buy a lot, you have to build the house within a year? Can we make rules like that?
I have no idea.
Well, didn't we used to have one like that?
I thought there was...
I thought we had an ordinance or something that...
Well, I think it was in...
Once they buy the lot, then they have six months to eat, or six months to start.
Yeah, and had to build in a year or something.
Well, maybe that's still in effect, and you could enforce it.
Yeah, yeah, that might be.
That's what I'd check out right away.
Yeah, I'll get back to you on that.
Send that guy a letter.
Yeah.
Say, we're here to rent your house.
Yep, yep, that's a good point.
Okay.
Love it.
Good deal.
Okay, and then continuing on with the land, transfers out, of course, land debt, and I think we touched on the other areas, so... If we want, we can move to our water fund, which is a whole separate sheet underneath. Page 12 of the cheat sheet. We'll start with, I mean, we can review some revenues on page two of the water fund packet. I conservatively estimate the water sales collected. Looking at around $2.2 million in revenues. We go over to the expenditure side, page three. Our utility supervisor, utility clerk, and one equipment operator are funded from the personnel side of the water. Contractual services for water, that includes a $75,000 payment to the rural water district that we make each year to purchase land to allow us, like, extend, extend our, what do you call it?
Service area, I think?
Yeah. Libability insurance increased a little bit, theme of the night. On our water purchase increase, basically, we tried to avoid the take-or-pay provision, so we try to use our Wichita Water first, so we don't have to pay any large take-or-pay provision, and then we'll use CCUA or juggle it that way. As you know, we're working to renegotiate the contract. On CCUA matters, I think I have the first rough draft of their budget, but we'll put in the finalized version of their budget into our budget to make those payments. Commodities, water system maintenance and repair was increased for 2018. This is mainly due to when we have leaks and breaks, we've got to fix them. And in 2016, in 2016, we had one main break that we had to call on outside help, and that hurts your budget, but yet, if we plan for a few of them breaks, it doesn't hurt as much, so that's what we're trying to do for 18. Again, the capital outlay line. There we go, page four. I do have the water fund putting up about $3,000 of the golf cart and dump bed. The water system improvements are basically the maintenance and care of our water towers. KHG's water loans are all amortized, or the schedule's out, so we're meeting them as scheduled. No more fluctuations, I guess, we're under standard repayment. And then all the transfers out are for the water expenses for the water-related bonds. Pretty straightforward on the water, water fund is, we have a lot of debt, and we pay and we maintain, and we have a little bit of salaries. That's what I try to tell most people on our utilities. On the sewer fund, if we want to go there, sewer fund, we do have, it's one of our more stable funds as far as any balance goes, but that's for a reason, they might expand some wastewater. Our wastewater plant might expand here in the near future, so we need to have enough to cover anything. What, again, conservative estimates on water charges collected, I believe we'll hit that target and then some, but we want to make sure that there's just under $2 million in new revenue, in revenues that will come into our sewer fund. Our sewer fund funds Public Works Director, Assistant Public Works Director, and two equipment operators. This is really, one of the bigger changes I made was in the contractual service line. For as long as I think there ever, I can remember, we've been buying water meters out of the water fund, which makes sense. However, once we look at it, we collect all our sewer charges based on water meters. So let's say in 2018, let's purchase any water meters, we may need out of the sewer fund to kind of balance that out. So I thought that was prudent to do. Again, like the water fund, once CCUAs, final budget come, we'll update those numbers, but those are what I have in there as placeholders. On the commodity side, Public Works really requested some funds that they can modify their office space. Basically, what they have is a lot of equipment operators that don't have workstation or anything to do, and Dave, he understands he can't live forever, and he really wants to try to get them guys writing some reports and doing a few things that they should be doing, but they just don't have the office space. So I think Dave said, if I can put a couple of shared office space in their, in their public works building over there, that he can get, maybe then to, you know, write some daily report or something like that, that would help with some of his career, what do you call it, career improvements, I guess, of some of his workers, and he said it's a need of some, a little bit of, you know, new paint, a few things like that. So he said $5,000 would be more than enough, so that's what, what he asked for. Lift station operations have continued to increase. As you know, we have repaired pumps and generators, so we increased that to match historical norms. Wastewater system maintenance, and this is pretty interesting, is we're actually doing our kind of, for, I guess, we did sewer tests, for neighborhood sewer tests in 2017, and we thought, wouldn't it be great in 2018 if we could take the test results and actually fix what we found? And so we're going to wait and see what the results are, and hopefully, use this line to fix what we found, and then do another test or two, if permitting, to other neighborhoods and systems for their testing sewer lines. So David thought that would be a good, a good use of funds, so that's where the water system M and R line is going. There's no questions on that. Transfer out, much like the sewer, the water fund, we have a KHG sewer loan, those are complete, and they're ready to be scheduled, scheduled payments, much like most of our debt. Transfer outs is the sewer portions of some of our previously bonded debt, no new debt in sewer. We're done with the sewer, we can go to the street. The real problem with our streets, and I know we've talked to it at length, but just the revenue side of the equation in streets. Majority of our funds from state and local highway tax, and it's gasoline tax, hasn't changed since, I think, 1993 is the last time I can remember, maybe it's been sooner. But cars are getting more efficient, so we get less revenue. I think this is, happens all, across all cities, but we only collect $285,000 and maintain all our streets and light, lighting, or street lighting and any kind of debt. So that's, that's our main revenues. However, we've been propping it up over the last two or three years with general fund transfers. This year, 150 from general, oh, no, 250 from general, and then we proposed doing 100 from solid waste. a hundred and fifty from general, oh, no, two hundred and fifty from general, and then we proposed doing a hundred from solid waste to make the total revenues about six hundred and thirty-five thousand into our street fund. On the expenditure side, we fund two equipment operators out of our street fund. And that might be something we can look at if we want, but really, we wanna, if these employees are working on the streets, we need to fund them out of this fund. The major, the major thing in contractual is street lighting. We spend almost sixty thousand, over sixty thousand, we budget sixty-five on the repairs, electricity and bulbs of all the street lighting in Central Park. Everything else is pretty standard. Vehicle, equipment, and repairs and maintenance went up or scheduled to go up in 2018, just based on 2016 actuals. We're having a lot of equipment breakdown on us, and we want to have enough money to fix it. And then on the back page, capital outlay, outlay page, we have street improvements, and that's scheduled right now for two hundred fifty thousand. But I know we're gonna look for more, but that's what that is currently. And then you'll see on the transfers out, you'll see the the new two thousand seven A, which would be our new bond that we're bonding in 2017 for the street improvements of around a hundred thousand. Hopefully, it's less, but that's what we're budgeting. The last thing, go ahead.
On that street lighting in Central Park, has anybody ever checked into those solar panels that fit at the top of the pole and shine down to see if that would cost us less than?
They haven't, but what they have been doing is switching over to LED lights, and that saves money. LED lights are much more efficient than the regular, and for the bulbs, and so they're starting to switch all of them over to LEDs to reduce that extension amount.
Don't we repair those poles and the lights and the bulbs and everything in Central Park?
Right, yep.
I keep harping on solar panels because I've seen them, but down there at Bremen, when you go down this lane, they have these tall silver poles, and they have a panel that's probably about that wide, about that deep, and it's on top of the pole that shines, that it's a solar thing, so it's it's pointed up. But when you leave that lane at night, it's like you're driving in daylight. And I'm sure they did to make sure that they weren't spending electric to go down there.
Yep.
You know, I do think we need to be considering that in some of these newer neighborhoods, because, you know, we did that in our neighborhood years ago. We put in a solar light by our bridge because it would have cost us three thousand dollars to run electricity to that area, and we could get a solar light put in for just a little bit less, and we've had it all these years, and we haven't paid a dime in electricity costs. It's been really low maintenance, and one of our neighbors just volunteered to repaint the pole. And so, you know, it's been a win-win situation for us, and I think more and more cities are thinking about this now, you know, for for the future and for new developments and things like that.
Yeah, yeah, no, we could, I can have them look into that about, you know, what would take to put.
Well, even if they just checked one to see how it worked.
Yeah, what the cost is.
What the cost is and that kind of stuff, because I know they got a lot of lights up here, but.
You know, that's one of the things I asked them to put on our survey, and Betty She was talking to us about what we wanted to see on that survey. I wanted to see them ask some questions like this about sustainability, you know? Does our community want to do this, you know, for more reasons than just money? Just to be, you know, friendly to our earth and to be more conservative about how we use energy and all that type of thing. A lot of other countries are doing this big time, I mean, on a large scale. And so I would have liked to have seen some questions like that on our survey to see how our citizens felt about that. I have a feeling there'd be a lot of people in this community that would really go for that type of thing.
Lastly, we, I did, I don't know if Betty May has it, but this solid waste fund summary. We're projected to end 2017 with about a hundred eighty-three thousand dollars in balance on that. Operating balance is about thirty-seven thousand in that, so if we take a hundred and fifty thousand and put it in the streets, it's really this year, and then we'll have to wait till it builds back up. So I don't want anybody thinking we can do that every year, because we really just don't, the margin isn't that high. You know, we don't overly charge our residents, took us a year and a half to get that fund balance to spend on streets. So I just want to let everybody know that, you know, this is kind of a one-time transfer until that builds back up, maybe in a couple of years, which, you know, further kind of says is when when we come back and talk next week, we'll have to really talk about how we want to fund streets going forward and and new budgets, because once we get our land debt refinanced, the land debt payments are gonna start going up a little bit each year. Right now, we've enjoyed pretty steady land, land payments, but, and this will all go into our five-year plan. The good thing about what you guys are wanting to do is this is all one-time expenditures. You're not locking us in to multi-year expenditures by transferring the streets. So so that's that's the good part, but let's step back and maybe in an off-budget year, and we can really talk about our five-year plan, what we need to do. I I'm not gonna do it, suggest or do anything negative that's gonna affect our five-year plan, but it's something we need to think about as we go forward in all these budget workshops, is what's around the corner, and how are we gonna address those issues? So other than that, I think I, that's all I have for the night, unless we don't have a general conversation. Anybody have any?
I've got something, just just an idea, that's all. I was in a place called Clark Rapids, Minnesota for a week or so, and that town is known for having flower baskets from all of its poles on the main drag, and they're baskets that are this big, like that, and they, of course, are watered every day and fed and so on, and so they continue to grow. And that whole thing is financed by an Ace Hardware store, okay? This is the connection, Ace Hardware store, and of course, he gets business as a consequence. And the florist who puts the, who sells the flowers to the city, they also get business. And you might, it might be interesting to see if that idea would flip with Christmas lights for any area, Woodlawn or wherever the community decides to do something like that. But it's all volunteer things grown each year, and they are known all across the state for, you know, for doing just that. And they have, it's a beautiful sight to see. I'm not saying the Christmas lights would be equal to it, but we could, you can, see if anybody's interested in contributing at the cost of flowers hanging from the poles, and because it's really, it's impressive, it really is.
That for, that subject has been brought up in the community development committee, I know, because one of the members has noticed that in other communities, and it's very impressive. It makes such an impression on people, and you want to go there, you know, you want to see this. And I think that's a worthy discussion, I'm certainly in favor of it.
Didn't we see that in Overland Park when we took that tour?
Yes, we sure did. There were lots of good ideas we got in Overland Park, and another thing, they had their marketplace out there in the middle of a parking lot, you know? They had built a little shelter down the middle. But the other component that they had, just like we've heard talked about so many times, is the trend now is to have storefronts down below and then have residential spaces up above, you know? Because that's the way people like to live now. There's, there are lots of communities doing that, and I think that's been a vision for out here, if we could get the numbers that would support the retail, you know?
And Ramona gives me a perfect segue, something I want to bring up, just kind of to close, you know, at the last meeting, I mentioned the idea of a of a developer, and we've heard a lot about these gathering spaces. We've heard about the need, especially as our debt payments are going to increase. You know, our commerce is pretty established, our residential is pretty established, we have all this land. And to to really get that going, to to put our best foot forward, I think, you know, the need to sell land is going to to increase. And again, I I view this as a golden opportunity, and, you know, it's, you know, nine thirty, so I'm glad I typed this out, but bear with me for just two minutes. You know, like I said, as I mentioned the last council, maybe I'd like the governing body to consider bringing a developer on board to really help Bel Air get to this next level. Most of us here at one time or another sitting here have mentioned a restaurant or a store, something we'd like to see locate within our city limits. Ty is a city manager, and he nor I really have those contacts to begin such a conversation. In the last few years, we've moved from outsourcing legal and our engineering to bringing them in-house as full-time employees. I'd like us to consider contracting with Jerry Jones, who recently was with Slosson, who is a developer with extensive experience in economic development and attracting businesses on a contract basis. At the tune of it, I know we're talking about finding money for streets, but it's something, you know, that, you know, if it was a thousand dollars a month, you might need you some commission, but where we could find a thousand a month, I think that'd be well worth it if it brings in a business and gets things really rolling to to get, sell some land and bring in more tax revenue. I really believe that now is the time to really begin the work of identifying and attracting tenants to move to Bel Air. We heard a lot about that with Ball Kingdom, with our survey and all of that stuff. And like I said, the biggest, you know, that we need to do this for several reasons. The biggest is selling the land and bringing in the additional tax revenue. I also think twofold, this would allow Ty to focus mainly on being our city manager, something he's not been able to do really since he came on here and running the city. I know it's not our agenda for tonight, and it's late, so I absolutely do not want us to really, you know, any action or anything, but just if that's something, if you guys could begin kind of thinking about that, if that's something.
I have a question for you. Have you talked to Jerry about this? Because I know he went to Vegas as well. What was his feedback?
On coming here?
Yeah.
That he thinks that now is the time here in Bel Air.
Well, that's not an answer.
But what do you want?
Now is the time, we're about five years late.
Central Park in a lot of ways was ten years ahead of its time. You know, because a lot of people are, you know, finding those things now, wanting to move to those types of areas.
Was Jerry interested in it? Did he give you a number? Is he gonna work on a full-time basis, is it a part-time basis, I mean?
I've had the forty thousand foot level conversation, guys, I I want to talk to you guys before I had anything of substance conversation with him, but.
Well, Jerry's starting a new business on his own, that's why he left Slosson, so I'm not sure he's gonna have a lot of time either.
Well, that's why we would, I would want it to be a very low base with the commission, so he's got some skin in the game. That, I mean, no, I I'm not suggesting that we, my gosh, especially, we're looking for another hundred, hundred fifty thousand dollars for streets. I'm not suggesting that, I hope you guys know that. But is it worth it for us to find ten, twelve thousand dollars that we used kind of as a retainer for him? Obviously, something we'd want to evaluate at the end of the year, and this is something that, you know, you know, he and Marlin could come to our next workshop, if you'd like, and and talk about it and ask, you know, some of those questions, you know, answer those questions. I just think it is now the time to do that. It is now the time to bring in the developer who can work to identify those tenants.
Well, Jerry is a talented man, I know that. But, you know, I don't know, whether a thousand bucks is gonna, you know, mean anything to him, a thousand bucks a month, I, you know? I mean, he does large projects.
Yeah, he was the principal developer in New Market Square, he did economic development at the city of Wichita, with the Chamber for a number of years, and got his, you know, BA from Harvard. He's a good guy. You know, when I threw something out like that, you know, a low base with the commission, he he was interested, and he would be interested in having the conversation if we are interested in having that conversation. Again, I don't want you guys to, I mean.
I don't think he's gonna do it for a retainer, a thousand dollars.
If he would, is that something you'd be interested in?
He would be developing exactly what, more residential, more retail?
Retail.
Yeah, he's not really residential.
Yeah, he he would be mainly retail, and he works with a lot of the mixed use, exactly, as we just talked about, the residential with the gathering spaces and the, you know, finding the tenants.
That's not really what our survey said was wanted out here.
Yep. They did not want that retail, period. They didn't want it downtown.
I'm not talking, I'm talking finding some type of businesses, you know, we've got all this land out here.
You mean industrials?
No, I'm talking, do not, do not take these as, I'm gonna name, name businesses, I've, and we've had zero conversations, I don't think for a second. But let's bring, you know, like, do we get the Trader Joe's? Do we, you've mentioned you've wanted a Costco here a number of times. He would be the type of person who would be able to say, hey, you know what? Costco is someone that I think we we could, or we should, or we could not really go after this point, or here's what we have to do to get to that. He would have those contacts, whereas Ty and I don't. That's what I'm thinking, or same thing, if it would be cool, if he had the the contacts to look at a Trader Joe's or, heck, let me throw them out here, an Ikea, those things aren't coming here, Dave and Buster's, those things aren't coming here. But that's, you know, and that's why I use those names for examples, but some of those.
I I think that, you know, we need to think about that, but I'm gonna say again, when people look for a home or a place to build a home, they want to know the schools. I still think that's one of the most important things we need to work on. We need our own schools that are right here in Bel Air, we need to have.
Well, they are our schools percent.
Well, we thought we were getting them when we all.
We need what we thought we were going to get and what the school board had planned to give us. And I think we need to really work on that with the school board. I think that needs to be a very high priority for us.
But I don't think we're ever gonna get it.
Well, I think we will never get it if we don't try, you know?
You were at the school board meetings as well as I was, how many people were there?
Well, I mean, this is what we need to do, we need to talk to school board members, we need to start really have have a plan, you know? We need to work with people and decide, how can we do this? There has to be a way, because that was planned by our school board. We were cheated out of what we were supposed to get, the school board was cheated out of the money they were supposed to get, and that would do more to help us get more rooftops and sell more land than anything else. And if you ask any realtor, they'll tell you, that's what people look for when they buy homes. They want to know exactly where their kids are gonna go to school. And I mean, we do have good schools, but it's not right here in our city, like, we need to have it, you know? That Isley was supposed to be our kindergarten through eighth, and the high school was supposed to be our high school, that we, I mean, that would make a huge difference. And now we see, hopefully, the the state's gonna turn around, and we might be going in the right direction again, and the, they might figure out a way to get the funding that the court ordered for the public schools in this state. And so we need to be thinking about working with the school board to get back to the original plan.
It would still be a USD two five. It would still be a USD 259 school. And I know when I talk to people, I disagree with it totally, but, oh, Andover Mays are way better than.
Well, see, that's the thing, that's the problem we need to think about.
The Andover's falling down, as it was in the paper, their percentage.
Yeah, one thing that's nice about Bel Air is we have two very good private schools here. We also have a magnet school, we also have a grade school. But yeah, if we could have a.
Most people aren't interested in private schools, you know?
I have no idea if, yeah, I remember that bond issue and I remember the superintendent saying.
It's so easy to forget that, but we have to realize, we missed out on what we were supposed to have. It would have made a huge difference.
I don't know that we necessarily, we missed out because we got the short end of the stick.
Yeah.
We really did. I don't know if we can reverse that, we can certainly have that conversation. But at the same time that that conversation, if we could have, you know, look into the future with what we're going to have here. And I think, I think education should absolutely be a part of that.
I know there's such a thing as a shared school. I don't know if that's the exact term they use, but it's half a public school on one side for the neighborhood and it's half a magnet school on the other side. This building that we have out here is only half full because it was supposed to be big enough for 1,200 students, you know? Because it was going to be our high school. Now, the magnet school doesn't take up all that space, so they could still make that.
Heights are still as crowded as it was before the bond issue, you know?
It could, it could be one of these split schools. They've done that in other places. And I think we're missing out if we don't do that, because that's the first thing that people ask. If you talk to Realtors, what's the school system? And they want to know for sure. You know, you can say, well, 50 kids from Bel Air get to go there. Well, it's a maybe. We want to know for sure if our child could go to that wonderful school. I think we should make that a priority to really work with the school board and figure out if this is possible. And to me, it should be possible, the plans were all laid out.
We certainly had that conversation, fortunately, we don't have the power to.
We have the power to talk.
We have the power to talk.
We have the power to lobby, we have the power to work with people. We can't just say, oh, well, we lost out, so it's too bad.
Aren't they supposed to give us a percentage, that percentage of?
It's supposed to be.
The Bel Air, they'd be going up every year.
That was my understanding, is that happening? Are we following up on that?
Last, I talked to Wendy Johnson, I think six months or a year ago, and asked her that question. Because someone had asked me that. And I think at that point, they were supposed to have 40, 35, 40% there. And they had like 41%, 42%, it was over what they were supposed to have. But yeah, it's not 50% or anything like that, it was like 40%, 35, something like that. So they did, at that point, they did have more than what they're supposed to, but it's not the whole school.
I think we, I think we should make that a priority in my mind. You know, we talked about all these other things we can do. But if you talk to somebody that's actually selling real estate and they'll tell you the first thing when a family is looking for a home, they want to know about the schools.
And we don't have anybody from Bel Air on the school board.
No, we don't, but we know people on the school board. And you can always talk to people on the school board. And after all, it is our school board. 259 is our school district. We're part of, we're constituents of 259. So why can't we work on that? I think it's exciting to work on, I don't see any glimmer in your eye. I mean, I think we should get excited about it.
I would love it if that could happen. I think you might be the perfect person to even go talk to them.
Well, we have to have them. You know, you can't do anything if you don't have a plan.
I would be all for, and I'd go with you. We could have that conversation.
I've wondered why we haven't done anything about that, you know?
You guys okay if Ramona and I make a phone call and see if we can't get a meeting?
Fine with me.
I mean, I can't see just giving up on something and not.
Okay, are we ready to churn, I'm tired.
Ramona, you're excited now.
I just wanted to put that out there, because I think it's important, you know, I really.
Well, you and the mayor go talk to them. I can't make that as a motion, so.
There is no motion, we're not meeting. Yeah, Ramona and I can go together, we're not breaking any code or anything. We will find the time to make that happen. All right, guys, anything else come up? We will find out for sure if that's something he is willing to do for like $1,000 in the retainer. I will certainly let you guys know and maybe they can come to, like I said, our July workshop. Not something I want us to decide tonight. I think finding street money is vital and I think finding money to start getting that retail is vital. And I think it's vital that Ramona and I knock some sense in the school board.
No, not knock some sense in, just remind them, remind them of their plan for us. You know, that they were robbed of, the school board, the 259 was robbed of that, just as much as the city of Bel Air, among a lot of other things they didn't get, you know?
I have nothing else, anybody else? Everybody drive safe.